Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
It is so far. They haven't approved the agenda, though, so.
Good evening. Thank you so much for your patience. The board is about to finish closed session. If you do want to submit a general public comment request, we ask that you do so now before they are in that section to avoid any delays or modifications to the duration. At this time, we have received seven public comment requests. And so, yes, so they'll be right out. But if you have a public comment request, please sign up now before that agenda portion so the president can be prepared to move the meeting forward. Thank you. Is this true?
Washington Unified School District Regular Board of Education Meeting for April 10, 2025. We are reconvening our open session, and we're going to start first with our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the land currently occupied by Washington Unified School District. It's a traditional home of the Potwin people. These sovereign people have been caretakers of the area since time immemorial. Despite centuries of genocide and occupation, the Potwin people continue as vibrant and resilient federally recognized and unrecognized tribes, spans, and rancherias. Today, we honor and recognize our Potwin tribal neighbors for their contributions as caretakers of the Sacramento Valley and honor their sustained existence. With their blessing and continued guidance, Washington Unified School District seeks to provide an accessible, equitable, and supportive institution of learning and experience. And that will take us to our Pledge of Allegiance. Can we have Jenneba with the Children's Alliance? Please lead us in the pledge.
She's already standing. You're all ready.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh my God. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And that takes us to our roll call. We have Vice President Coffey.
Present.
Kurt Castro.
Present.
Trustee Wong is present here, and Trustee Hunt.
Here.
I too am present. And our student board member, Mariana Gutierrez.
Present.
Okay. This evening, because we do have Trustee Wong joining us virtually, we'll have roll call votes throughout the evening when we vote. Okay, our announcements of actions taken in closed session. We are returning into closed session for Items 1, 2, and 4. But Government Code Section 54957.6, Conference with Labor Negotiators, WSCA, CSCA, and Management. Information was received and direction was given. And for the rest, we'll go back in this evening. Are there any changes to the approval, any changes to the agenda? Then can I get a motion?
I move.
Can I request the Item 10 on action items for the Elton, where I, modernization, just be moved up in the action items for one? Because I understand that there may be parents in the audience who want to provide.
Yes, and I think in looking at this, we have our, I know we also have families looking through these. I know we have staff families, staff families. I think up until Item 6, I think we might have some families where we've got public comments. So I would say if we moved it to Item 7 above the contracts.
Dr. Hildreth says.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to move Item 10 up above Item 7, so it'll come after Item 6.
Okay.
Thank you for that. All right, then can I get a motion to approve? I think it was made by Vice President Coffey.
I still move.
Okay, and seconded by?
Me.
Kurt Castro. And then we have to do roll call votes this evening. So Vice President Coffey.
Here. I mean, yes.
Kurt Castro.
Yeah.
Trustee Hunt.
Yes.
Trustee Wong. And I too vote aye. Okay, and now we have our communications and celebrations. We have our proclamation recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Welcome to Yorgos Kazanis, our Executive Director of Communications.
Good evening, trustees. This evening, the board was requested to adopt a proclamation in honor of Child Abuse Prevention Month. This month raises awareness and promotes the importance of child safety and well-being, not just throughout Washington Unified School District, but throughout our entire community and abroad. We have a number of various community organizations that our school district works with throughout the year to ensure awareness is raised and the principles of Child Abuse Prevention Month are also encouraged. And we've also invited a few individuals from the Child Abuse Prevention Council of Yolo County, Yolo County Children's Alliance as well. They're here this evening. We'd like to invite them to the podium to join me. They have, I think, a few other words that they would like to emphasize in addition to this proclamation. I also want to underscore that the board already adopted a resolution earlier this school year in honor of Child Abuse Prevention Month, but this is an opportunity for us to invite our community partners as well to emphasize the importance as well. So with that, I would like to invite the members of the Child Abuse Prevention Council and Yolo County Children's Alliance to the podium.
Good evening, President Kirby Gonzalez, Superintendent Hildreth, and Board of Trustees. My name is Adrian Lauder. I'm the Director of Prevention and Wellness with Yolo County Office of Education. I'm here with the Executive Director of the Yolo County Children's Alliance, Jenneba Lahai, and Maria Isabel Manduano, a Prometora with Communicare. We are members of the Yolo County Child Abuse Prevention Council, and we are accepting this resolution on behalf of the Yolo County Child Abuse Prevention Council and Yolo County Children's Alliance. Thank you for supporting children and families today and making their well-being a priority of your work. The Child Abuse Prevention Council's mission is to eliminate child abuse and neglect and to address adversity it causes by strengthening families and communities. In 2024, Yolo County Child Welfare Services investigated allegations involving 1,033 children. While not every case was substantiated, 124 children in Yolo County entered foster care last year. Although this number reflects the slight decrease from 2023, disparities persist. Black children ages 0 to 5, who make up just 2.5% of Yolo County's child population, represented 10.5% of foster care entries. Addressing this disparity remains a top priority of the CAPC. We are committed to implementing culturally responsive strategies that protect our most vulnerable children and strengthen our families. Jenneba will now explain how the CAPC promotes public awareness of child abuse prevention.
Thank you, Adrian. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Hildreth, and the amazing team, Washington Unified School District. We're so honored to be here today. So April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and the Child Abuse Prevention Councils throughout Northern California has decided to join force under It Takes a Village. So that is the theme for Child Abuse Prevention Month. Reinforcing the importance of collective action in preventing child abuse and ensuring child well-being. Research shows that strong social connections can significantly reduce the risk of child abuse and neglect. Every positive connection, whether from a teacher, a neighbor, or mentor, can help a child thrive. So thank you all for what you do for the students of Washington Unified School District. So since this year's campaign focuses on raising awareness and taking collective action through several key initiatives, on April 25, which is a very important date in the child abuse prevention world, it is always celebrated. It is the Children's Memorial Flag Day, which is observed on the 4th Friday of April, and this has been happening since 1997. So one of the things we do on those days, on that day, is to host a pinwheel garden. Hosting a pinwheel garden at your organization, agency, or school is a powerful way to demonstrate the impact of positive connection on a child's life. So the pinwheel, I don't know if you've seen that little thing, blue thing that kind of spins. Each pinwheel represents the bright and healthy childhood every child deserves. This campaign also reminds of the incredible impact each of us can have on a child's life. So Maria Isabel is also going to talk about different initiatives we're implementing throughout Yolo County and how one can take action.
Good afternoon, everybody. We invite you to take action and help amplify this message. Participate in the community art project to encourage children to share their vision in a safe and nurturing world. Host a pinwheel garden at your home, your school, or your workplace as a visible statement of support for children. Attend the Children's Memorial Day event on the last Friday of April at the Family Resource Center to stand in solidarity with families who have experienced loss. Prevention goes beyond awareness. It requires action. By fostering social connections, providing support to families, and engaging in the community force, we can make a lasting impact. All CAP month projects, guides, and resources are available at the Yolo Kids webpage, where you can learn more about how to support the families and prevent child abuse in Yolo County. Thank you for your commitment to this cause. Together, we can ensure every child grow up feeling safe, valued, and supported. I want to say gracias. Gracias por apoyar esta labor en mantener a todos los niños de nuestra comunidad en un ambiente seguro y apoyados. Gracias. Thank you.
We'll take a photo and come down. I just want to also thank you for being partners. As you said, It Takes a Village. And I know many people in this room have had the unfortunate experience of having to call CPS and being worried about their students and kids, and thank you for the work that you do because the school district alone cannot do it. And with that, we're going to come down and take a picture with the resolution.
Make a motion to approve.
Oh, well, we should. Well, we already made a motion to approve it. We approved it earlier in the year.
This is a proclamation.
Okay. Thank you. Yes. Can I have a motion to approve the proclamation recognizing April as Children's Child Abuse Prevention Month?
I move.
Okay, thank you. Moved by Vice President Coffey.
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Trustee Hunt. And then again, we have to do our roll call vote. So Vice President Coffey.
Aye.
Kurt Castro.
Aye.
Trustee Hunt.
Aye.
Trustee Wong. Student Member Gutierrez. And I too vote aye.
Yay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That takes us to our second celebration this evening. And our second celebration is our After-School Professionals Appreciation Week. Welcome up, our Coordinator of Expanded Learning Programs, Ryan Carroll.
Good evening, Superintendent Hildreth, Board President Kirby Gonzalez, Board Vice President Coffey, Board Members Castro, Hunt, and Wong, Student Board Member Gutierrez, and Cabinet Members. My name is Ryan Carroll, and I am the Coordinator of Expanded Learning Programs in the Washington Unified School District, working alongside our Director Martina Guerra. Tonight, I would like to take some time to talk about the expanded learning professionals that operate our programs at our seven elementary school sites. They are hardworking, passionate, and dedicated individuals who are helping to shape the lives and minds of students before and after the school day and want to highlight some of the work they do, and also bring attention to After-School Professionals Appreciation Week, sponsored by the National After-School Association. So just to kind of go through, we do highlight for goals for student success in the early years, support the whole child, opportunity for achievement for every student. Our equity principles are cultivating healthy relationships that create a safe and empowering environment, ensuring that all students are provided access and opportunity to resources, ensuring that all students, staff, and families are valued, accepted, and supported, and removing the predictability of success or failure that correlates with students' social, cultural, or ethnic identity. Of the four pillars, we mainly think that we focus on pillar A, which is equity-focused teaching and learning. My bad, sorry. So again, pillar A, won't go through all of them, but this is the summary of the pillar A. So a little bit about the National After-School Association. So the National After-School Association is the professional membership association for people who work with and for youth during out-of-school time. The National After-School Association fosters positive youth outcomes by supporting, developing, and advocating for after-school professionals and leaders. The association is the leading network of out-of-school time professionals. As a national association, they deploy their mission through people-centered programs and partnerships. They build equity, access, and connections to create a strong, valued profession that benefits kids, families, and communities. So the Washington Unified School District and the NAA believe every young person deserves quality, enriching experiences after school that positively impact their development and help them thrive. One of the ways that is done is by the staff working in the after-school programs. Research on the importance of staff and leaders in creating quality of experience, WSD supports, develops, and advocates for after-school professionals and leaders. Washington Unified School District follows and adheres to the Quality Standards for Expanded Learning Programs guidelines. The purpose of the Quality Standards is to describe high levels of quality of a program at the programmatic, staff, and participant levels. The Quality Standards are intended to serve as the following: A framework of clear expectations for all stakeholders; A guide to inform the after-school division's decision-making; A guide for program providers to assess their own programs in order to help determine what they are doing well and what needs improvement; A guide for parents and youth to identify quality programming; A guide for school principals and district superintendents to reinforce and advance key priorities. And it's a complement to other standards in the state of California focused on quality improvement. These standards are what help to drive decision-making processes in our after-school programs. The site staff have direct impacts on standards one through six on their school sites with their daily interactions with the students. The community-based organizations that we partner with and our Expanded Learning Department focus on standards seven through 12, which are more behind the scenes. So one that we'd like to focus on in particular today is focused on number seven, which is providing quality staff. As the Expanded Learning Department, we work to foster partnerships, policies, and programs that support the development of individuals, generally young people, who work in the after-school program to provide high-quality after-school opportunities for youth. As a district, we help the community-based organizations with standard number seven, quality staff. Again, a majority of the staff are currently enrolled in college courses and use the after-school program as a springboard into their careers as future educators. WSD also recognizes and promotes the important contribution of the after-school profession and its professionals. One of the major impacts that the Washington Unified School District has had on after-school programming is helping with the development of quality staff. As a department, we realized that we needed to work with our community partners to help develop quality programs, which begins with quality staffing. In order to do this, we have implemented professional learning days three times during the school year. First, a vigorous three-day training before the school year begins to set the tone for the year, set district's expectations, review health and safety protocols, and start to develop leadership qualities in all our after-school staff. Second day is training in the fall on the District Professional Learning Day to continue the learning from the summer. And our last day is training in the spring during the District's Spring Professional Learning Day, where we conclude the trainings and help them set goals for the remainder of the school year. All of these trainings help the staff to create a safe and supportive environment, Quality Standard Number One, that provides students in the program opportunities to share, build relationships, to learn, and the ability to try new things. As a district, by the numbers, so when I began working in the district in 2223, we were operating in five after-school sites: Elkhorn Village, Riverbank, Stonegate, Westfield Village, and Westmore Oaks. On the daily average attendance, we were averaging about 436 students a day, roughly also about 40 staff members working with those students. The following year, we added two more sites, Bridgeway and Southport, and our average daily attendance went up to 928 students a day. As of this year, still working with seven sites, we are now averaging over 1,200 students daily, which means our staffing has increased from 40 staff in '22 to '23 to now about 115 staff in the after-school programs. We are currently working with the City of West Sacramento Parks and Recreation Department, Champions, and the YMCA as our primary providers, providing care from the end of the regular school day until 6:00 p.m., everyday schools in session. In addition, we have also partnered with approximately 15 outside vendors to bring in theater, dance, social-emotional learning, fitness, Spanish language lessons, soccer, art, and environmentalism. So, the fun part. After-School Professionals Appreciation Week happens the week of April 21st through April 25th, so the week after our spring break. It is a time to recognize and appreciate and advocate for those who work with young people during out-of-school hours. From before the sun rises and after the sun sets, a dedicated group of individuals step into the spotlight, the true unsung heroes of our students' growth and development. After-school professionals, tireless and committed, work diligently during those precious out-of-school hours to create safe, engaging, and enriching experience for our youth. While this is called After-School Professionals Appreciation Week, it should be Expanded Learning Professionals Appreciation Week. The Expanded Learning staff are sometimes the first adults to students see on campus for those sites that have a before-school program. At Stonegate, those staff members are Ms. Leila and Ms. Lupita. At Southport, those staff members are Ms. Bee and Ms. Rosanna. And at Bridgeway Island, those staff members are Ms. Recora, Mr. Danny, and Mr. Oleg, who usually arrive around 6:45 a.m. to welcome students at 7:00 a.m. before school opens. The Expanded Learning staff are also the last adults they see on campus with program ending at 6:00 p.m., and this happens every day schools in session. So on the first day of school, the Expanded Learning staff are the first adults the kids will see. On the last day of school, they'll be the last adults the students will see on the campus. So who is an after-school professional? After-school professionals are skilled individuals who work with children and youth in diverse school and community-based settings to provide various positive developmental relationships and experiences during out-of-school hours. Currently in the United States, an estimated 850,000 individuals are practicing members of the after-school profession. And these are actually pictures of our staff working with students in our programs. So all the pictures that we see will be our staff and not stock photos. So why is it important to recognize after-school professionals? After-school professionals deserve recognition, appreciation, and support for the work with kids, families, and communities. It is estimated that 7.8 million young people participate in after-school programs yearly in the United States. For every child in an after-school program, two more are waiting to get into a program. Research also shows that after-school professionals are the key to the program quality that mitigates risk factors and positively impacts youth outcomes. After-school programs run by skilled professionals result in increased social-emotional skills, school attendance, and academic performance. Sorry. Every young person deserves quality after-school experiences that positively impact their development. It takes skilled professionals to create these experiences. Again, over 850,000 after-school professionals, those who work with children, youth during out-of-school time, are part of a highly skilled and valuable profession. However, they are not recognized or appreciated for their essential work. Besides leading the classroom of 24 students a day, they also create work plans, serve meals and snacks. They work directly with the families. They give basic first aid as needed. They require safety and supervision, play above shared spaces, homework assistance. They become mentors. They become almost a second set of guardians for these students and become a safe haven for these kids who may not have that outside of the school day. Research shows that skilled and knowledgeable program staff are the backbone of program quality and are key to desired positive youth outcomes. Let's continue to recognize, appreciate, and advocate for after-school professionals beyond this week. I'd like to shout out again to our partners, the City of West Sacramento, Champions, and the YMCA, who work directly in the Expanded Learning field at our school sites. The work they do, the work they've done, it matters. After-school professionals provide and create safe haven for students away from home. They are the guiding stars illuminating the path to a brighter future for our youth by creating amazing experiences after school. Please join us as we take the week of April 21st to 25th to celebrate our amazing partners and the work that they do. I like to put a lot of pictures in. For more information about After-School Professionals Appreciation Week, you can visit the link that's on the slide. Again, thank you all for allowing us to give us the time, working with our Director Martina Guerra, our Administrative Secretary Patrisa Quijada, and our Family Support Specialist Maricela Orpeza. As a department, as a team, we work together to ensure that all students have the opportunity to get an after-school program, to have the opportunity to try new things. So again, thank you very much.
And I know I am not alone when I say that, as a working parent, that our after-school, before-school programs were essential so that I could get to work on time as well and entrust my kids with a caring adult who would take care of them so that I could head off to work knowing that they would arrive to their classroom safely. And for all of the families that are in those positions, I just want to thank you both for all the work that you've done to oversee this program and make it what it is. And then, of course, for all of those who are not here with us this evening, I just think we should give one more really loud round of applause for them and everybody listening. So we'll make sure and thank them all when we come back from spring break, when you see their faces at schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and that takes us now to our Student Board Member Report. And we have from River City High School, Mariana Gutierrez.
Hello, good afternoon, everyone. I'll try to make this effective and short because I know we have a lot to get through today. Okay, starting off with Bridgeway Island. Today, Bridgeway Island held their AB run. They want to thank PTO for all their hard work. Fourth-grade teachers attended a professional development day, which focused majority on math. At Elkhorn, parents went to campus for the ELAC meeting, where they created vision boards. They went to, they want to, Elkhorn wants to wish luck to their Mesa students as they are going to regionals this weekend. Quack Jack has arrived at Southport. Thanks to PTO for making it happen. Sammy Circuit visits them tomorrow. I love the video. Stonegate held a, can't read my handwriting. Oh my gosh. Oh, a quarter awards assembly for the sixth through eighth graders and invited parents to join. 610 sixth through eighth graders earned a 3.0 or above this last quarter. Thank you to Sammy Circuit for coming out. Westmore Oaks hosted a poetry night for families, where students created poems and were able to laminate them into books. Westfield wants to thank West Sac PD for presenting the dangers of vaping to their middle schoolers. They also want to thank Mr. Cody and Mr. Richard for leading their student gardening club. Washington Unified Virtual Academy's third through eighth graders have been preparing for their CAS testing. When they return from spring break, the students will be going to SMUD Museum of Science and Curiosity. Washington Adult School is proud to recognize Maria Romero, a dedicated student since 2019. She was a successful orthodontist in Mexico and has been working endlessly to master English, achieving exceptional level of fluency and becoming a U.S. citizen February of this year. At Yolo, students are working hard to shape a positive school culture. They have been engaging in group sessions, which give them a supportive space to grow. At RCHS, our leadership students attended a meeting with the California Secretary of State, Dr. Shirley Weber, last Friday. Here, they asked her questions, and they discussed things that they can do to be more involved in their community. We want to give thanks to the Commonwealth Club for making this possible. I want to mention I attended, and it was so amazing. Last but not least, we want to give, we have Washington Middle. They are very excited about their charter renewal. They are looking forward to another five years of service to the Washington Unified School District community. That is it.
Okay, thank you so much. And that now takes us to the WSTA report. Welcome, President Neff.
Wow. I don't often feel loved, so that's pretty nice. Right, Shay? All right. Good evening, Superintendent Hildreth, President Coffey, sorry, President Kirby Gonzalez, Vice President Coffey, Trustees, Cabinet, Student Board Member Gutierrez. It's good to see you all. First of all, I want to take a shout out to the amazing turnout of all the dedicated teachers in this room. So if you're familiar with public education, you know what it means to come out on a night before spring break. Right? Because these guys are already visualizing what they're going to do, and for most of them, it's absolutely nothing. But they're here to stand up for our students, for our staff, and our community. But they're here to stand up for our students, for our staff, and our community. West Sacramento students deserve the best, and tonight, I'm going to talk about how this board has the power to prioritize that ideal. To start off, I want to thank the board and cabinet, Carla Salvo, Dinah Malkin, and all of the others that have endorsed the work of the SPED task force. This is something that we asked for at the beginning of last year. As you will likely hear tonight, the task force worked diligently to address continuing challenges facing students in our special education program and the challenges their teachers and specialists face as well. The group worked to identify items that could be changed with simple procedural tweaks, items that needed internal policy changes, and items that required changes to the collective bargaining agreement. In particular, the group identified caseload caps as a critical component to help in this area. Please listen to the professionals tonight and to the presentation and consider authorizing caps on caseloads. This is just one of the many items that we know will improve outcomes for our students in special education. You have the power to do it if we're keeping up with the Joneses, and more than keeping up if we're leading the pack. Our students with the most need deserve the most attention. Just a brief side note, I wanted to point out, I was disappointed to hear, and hopefully I'm wrong, but that there was no funding for snacks for CASP testing this year. If this is the case, it's the first time in 22 years that I've been here that there haven't been snacks. We all know what the studies say. Nutrition is a really important part of testing. I remember way back in the 1990s, when I was in school and we got our cheese stick and orange juice. Some of you probably remember that. It's very important to get through the day. I'll just note once again that we have over $100,000 budgeted for out-of-state travel, but we can't buy a couple crackers and some juice for our students. Many of you have recently heard from special interest groups such as School Services of California and the California School Board Association. They have a special audience with you. I'm aware that there was an emergency meeting regarding the California Teachers Association We Can't Wait campaign. There have been all sorts of alarmist mischaracterizations of this movement. I want to be clear, there is nothing secret, underhanded, or dishonest about this movement. In fact, I think everyone in this room can agree with the platforms WSTA has adopted in alignment with the movement. They are as follows. One, we must fully staff our schools to provide for the needs of all students. Two, we must provide highly competitive compensation to recruit and retain the best and brightest teachers, specialists, and academics that students deserve. We see some of them here tonight. Three, we must provide stability for our students and our community. Year to year, we need consistent programs, staffing, and resources. We need to stop playing ring around the rosy with our plans. We need to get a plan, and we need to stick to it. This is what We Can't Wait is all about. There's no secret handshake behind the door, and in fact, I'm going to just really briefly walk up and give you our platform so that you know there's no secrets. I want to once again say, let me be clear, California School Services and the California School Board Association are special interest groups. They have a special opportunity to have the ear of school boards across the state and coordinate. My group is trying to do the same thing in advocacy of students and teachers. And yet, when my group does it, there's a lot of freaking out. Where's our voice? Where's our closed session? We have no closed session. This is what we're doing, and we're serious now. We're ready. We're ready to fight. Listen, these aren't controversial ideas. Currently, California has the fifth-largest economy in the world, and yet, we're 33rd in per pupil funding. Teachers are making 26% less than other college-educated professionals. And oftentimes, we hear, "But you do it for the kids." Absolutely! That is what we're doing, but guess what? We have kids too. We want to do it for our kids. We're struggling to maintain staffing in our most crucial roles in special education. I'm going to speak on behalf of CSCEA. Paraprofessionals, we're having the hardest time holding on to them, and our teachers need them, and so do our students. SDC and RSB teachers, social workers, psychologists, SLPs, and paraprofessionals are opting out of public education for more lucrative opportunities. Washington Unified School District has the opportunity to lead from the front instead of tail from the back. In a moment, Stephen Weiss, the bargaining chair, will once again present some data addressing how WUSD compares to other urban schools in regards to compensation. Here's a sneak preview. Our comparative salary is rather unimpressive. WUSD seems to prioritize many wasteful, unnecessary programs. We overspend on duplicated SEL programs. We've talked about this. Sammy Circuit, Second Step, Sanford Harmony, let's pick one and move on. We spend money on consultants that are in one year and out the next year. We have constant out-of-state travel, and I just want to say it was pointed out to me that a lot of that comes from grants. Then let's have some transparency. I want to find out for certain that that grant money can't be spent directly on students. If that's the case, all aboard. The annual 24.25 guaranteed percent increases for our highest-paid employees such as our CBO and our superintendent. And this is just the tip of the iceberg. If we make a budget that prioritizes student-centered programs and projects and competitive salaries for staff and students, the students will receive and reap the rewards. Teacher recruitment and retention are key. Hang on, I'm going to grab my water. Why did WSTA join the California Teachers Association We Can't Wait campaign? Because West Sacramento students can no longer wait for the education they deserve. We can't wait for a focus on student learning to be valued as highly as elevated graduation rates. We can't wait to actually help struggling student behavior rather than just reducing suspension rates to make it look good. We can't wait for a student's education to be about more than what overrated curriculum we spend too much money on. We can't wait to hold on to our best teachers instead of watching them leave because the pay is better across the river or along their current commute. We can't wait for students and teachers to feel safe in their classrooms. We can't wait for students in special education to get the attention they deserve but lack because of bloated caseloads for our specialists and SPED teachers. The bottom line is that we are done with simply standing by and waiting for things to get better. Less than half a mile to the east of here is Sacramento City School District. If I were to just change my address, the address of my employment, by a half a mile next year, I could make an astounding $20,000 more annually. This is roughly $1,600 a month. This constitutes a rent payment for a single-room apartment for a lot of people. It's very tempting. Now, you probably don't mind the idea of having Douglas Nepp move across the river so you don't have to see me every other Thursday, but if you look behind me, there's some amazing teachers doing amazing work that we cannot afford to lose. As board members, you have the power to prioritize values in how you direct the cabinet and the CBO. The budget must start to reflect these values. I now would like to turn the remainder of my time, as if I have a limit, over to Stephen Weiss. Thank you.
I had a different one, and I shared it with the school board. Yes, Stephen Weiss, the bargaining chair, I shared it with the school board. I heard back from one of you, so hopefully the rest of you have seen it and acknowledged it. It was short notice, mind you. It's been less than 24 hours, and if you didn't get it, then I must have the wrong email, and I will work on it, or colleagues can share it. But it was a better version of that, essentially. So what you would see on that one is that if you're looking at the farthest column, we are the lowest, and I have a lot more talking points. Cory Booker talked for 25 hours, I'm shooting for 23, so buckle up. I come here tonight because I don't want to leave this district. I have a good job. I like where I work. I like who I work with. So when I talk tonight, it's because I want these things to change so I can afford to stay here. However, without serious soul-searching about the priorities in our district's budget, I will be forced to leave. I am sure you will hear from my colleagues that are already leaving or seriously contemplating leaving. I am not fighting for more than anything others have in our surrounding districts. I'm not fighting for us to compete at the highest level of pay, although if that's a directive, I will not complain. I am fighting to make us competitive. I am fighting to make us be at least average in terms of compensation. I'm fighting for the district to acknowledge we are underpaid. I'm fighting for there to be a strategic plan to close the gap. There is a strategic plan seemingly for everything, but clearly not to address the shortcomings Without that strategic plan, I personally, WSTA, and our bargaining team will take the lead. So the proposal WSTA, myself, the bargaining team shared with the district just yesterday is addressing this. Again, if I didn't get the correct email, I will share it. I really encourage you to look at it. I'll be referencing some information off of it. So I'm aware that our proposal will need to be run by the board. Ultimately, you're the ones that give directive on funding. So I'm here to explain our justification for why we asked for what we did. So here are some facts to support my argument, demonstrate my concern in monetary policies, and provide rationale for the importance of better compensation for our members. One, I checked today, there's 33 ed-joined positions for certificated staff today. That doesn't include internal candidates nor substitutes. Thirty-three already. There's 115 teachers who will be going into their 20th year or more next year. It's about 25% of our staff. Within the next 10 years, we can expect a wave of retirements. We are the lowest, lowest potential earnings of all urban SAC County districts. It's not close. There was a different form. Again, I will make sure you all get it so you can see it. Right? The information we compile, it's all public. We just go to their salary schedules and just do some basic math. I will tell you how not close we are in a moment. So are we in a teacher shortage? Yes. Is it unique here? No. However, is there really surprise why our district feels the worst of it? Is it really surprise why our members are leaving? I've previously worked with an HR director that acknowledged, yes, paying more will make their job easier. It's easier to hire when you pay more. This is founded on a capitalist world. It's common sense. You pay more, it's easier to hire. Hiding from the problem that we are underpaid and hoping that we can fill vacancies is asinine at best. We have 20 people on the floating cell. Those are interns because that's all we could get. There's more. Up to $500,000 in potential lost income if you were to work in another district for 25 years. If you do the math and you work step one to step 25 in WUSD at the highest potential earnings, that would be about $2.24 million over the course of your career. That is $500,000 less than other districts. Even the district above us is about $100,000 more we could have earned. I'm going to say this to you all, and then I'm going to say it to everyone there. Making a career in WUSD will result in a later retirement than otherwise would have been the case to other districts. I will say it against you all. If you stay in this district, you will probably have to retire later than if you go across the bridge and earn hundreds of thousands of dollars more in your career. There's no way around it. I like working. I'd rather be retired. Last year, you may all remember, WSTA accepted a 4% raise. Sounds pretty good. It's not a raise. It's not a raise. Last year, we lost the 4% off-schedule payment. The 4% raise covered that. It was a wash. There was no raise. It got added to the salary schedule, so one might argue it's a raise. As to what people felt in their pocketbooks, it wasn't. We've had a loss in purchasing power after years of extreme inflation. Let's not forget, just two, it's been just a couple years, we had about 7% inflation for two years in a row. Our salaries have not kept up with that, tell you that much. $16 million. Sounds like a lot. Sounds like a lot. You're right. It is. That's 12% of our budget. That's how much money got found that we were assured they couldn't afford to pay us teachers anymore last year because it wasn't in the budget. 16%, 12% of the total budget. I get excited when I find a quarter on the ground. If I found 12% of my total salary in my couch, I'd be going to Cabo over spring break, and I'm not. So for perspective, for $16 million, the cost of a 1% raise for every employee, every certificate employee in the district is $500,000. Now, I'm not saying we could have or should have got 32% raise. It's always on the table. You can always go higher than my proposals. I am aware, that's an ongoing cost. I'm not naive. I wasn't asking for 32 million. Was I saying that more should have been given? Now, I know what the arguments are going to be against our push for equitable fair pay. Think I've heard all of them. I think it goes something like this. We have to be financially responsible. We're heading into uncertain times. With tariffs and the potential shuttering of the Department of Education, our expenses are rising, and we may lose funding. We're also a small district. And declining enrollment. Declining enrollment, we are losing students. Panic. That's what it feels like. I have a rebuttal to each of those points. They're valid, but not valid enough to be the reason why we are so far behind in pay. Point one, the district's financial responsibility. Well, I do appreciate us not going bankrupt or whatever the terminology would be, so thank you that much. However, that financial responsibility comes on the back of our members. Those raises have been far outpaced by inflation. The district's future is uncertain. That's point two. You can't predict it. Great. Neither can we. The difference is, the district is not the one who sees their monthly health insurance bill go up $500 a month. Our futures are uncertain too, but we don't have the luxury of $140 million budget with plenty of fat to cut off to reduce our expenses. If I did, I wouldn't be here. Point three, the district's costs may go up, or probably will. Agreed. They probably will. You are in a much better position to adjust than me. You have $140 million roughly, which, I mean, if you find 12% every year, that won't be an issue. You have the ability to adjust when costs go up. Our members don't, which is why some of them are leaving. They can't afford it. Point number four, there are districts that are smaller than us. Sorry. Point number four was, we're a small district. We can't compete. There's a shred of truth to that, I acknowledge. I'm not asking us to be at the same pay and benefit scale as benefit scale as SAC City. I would love it, but I recognize that's, that's probably not feasible. However, that also overlooks and cherry picks the fact that there are smaller districts than us that pay more. I would love to hear the rationale for how Robla and Center School District, which are half our size in Sacramento, managed to pay quite a bit more than us. Be curious to know that. Point five, declining enrollment. Actually, point four was, uh, small district. That is used as a cover to deny payment. You just say, we're a small district, sorry, and that's the end of it. Not a conversation back and forth, it shuts the door, and I believe that's a cover. Point five was declining enrollment. That is an issue in our state. It's not so much an issue in our district. Even by the district's own projections, they hired a third party, whomever the person is that, I forget the term, but, you know, does the census essentially. And our enrollment's actually supposed to be pretty consistent, with about 2% fluctuation from year to year. Like 20, 20 kids. Every time we've projected, we seem to have gone over. Regardless, in about 10-ish years, that's actually projected to go up. So other districts may really have to worry about declining enrollment. That's not so much an issue in our district, based on the information I've been provided. Since I've worked on the bargaining team, it all seems like it's a doomsday scenario when it comes to bargaining. Oh, we can't do this, we can't do that. Every year, it's something. I agree, you can't predict the future any better than I can. However, that doomsday scenario that repeatedly happened falls on the backs of myself and our members. There is money in the budget, if you make money in the budget. Here's an analogy I've shared with others, and I believe it's in the position we are in. When I was younger, I had a friend who always seemed to be short on money. Worked more than me, made more money than me. Always seemed to be short, interesting. It's not that he didn't have enough money, that he wasted it. Was money the problem when he went out to eat every day of the week and bought a brand-new phone every year? Was his money really the problem? No. In our district's case, there may seem to be a lot of things to spend money on because they sound good. That probably is true. What I am imploring you is to decide, is that the best use of the money? Are those priorities worth our members being at the bottom end of the salary? Are those priorities worth our members seeing healthcare insurance go up $500 a month? Are those priorities worth adding years till when I can retire? I unequivocally say no, and I know I'm not the only one. Thank you.
Welcome to our CSEA president, Gonzara.
I got a brief update, then I'm going to yield the rest of my time to my VP. I'm just going to speak on our, good evening, Board President Kirby Gonzalez, Superintendent Hildreth, Cabinet. I'm speaking on P4, which is the approval of the 26-27 instructional calendar. I'm also going to speak on the 25-26 calendar. I don't have a problem with the calendar, but we're changing days, as in spring breaks, starting the year off earlier, days in between, which is an impact to my classified staff. That being said, impacts are a mandatory subject of bargaining, and...
There you go. I can shut the light, I can shut the lights off.
We needed a little drama in here.
So the changes in calendar are a mandatory subject to bargaining, so I've already spoke with Superintendent Borges, and I know we're going to schedule some time with my team to go over the impacts and effects on my classified staff. And with that...
Good evening. Tonight I'm going to be talking about equity, and again, as the voice and for our members. Equity is something this district prides itself on, in terms of students, staff, and the district as a whole. As you know, I've stood up here numerous times and professed how classified employees do not always feel supported or valued. The agenda tonight reflects some of the reasons why we continue to feel this way, and that inequity in terms of representation of classified still persists. The special task force on SPED tonight, the first slide has a content quote, "A wide range of certificated staff was represented," which is wonderful, but no mention of classified. Reviewing the presentation, there's not one mention of a para educator, or the work that paras perform for SPED and SPED students. Those who support students in SDC classrooms, those who push into Gen Ed classrooms, who are in RSP classrooms, some for 25 years, who are responsible for minutes, who will be a determining factor in inclusion, are not even mentioned or part of the task force committee. This is the root of inequity, and it is lack of representation. Continuing is the highlights or celebrations listed in the presentation, like increased graduate rates, chronic absenteeism decline, decline of suspension rates. Definitively, I can say these celebrations are due to collective efforts by all, including the daily support of classified employees. The impact, the impacts of not including us, not giving us an opportunity to speak, not having a seat at the table, not recognizing us, does not help this district. We are left out or not included, and the message is clear. You all don't matter, your work doesn't matter. How can we retain and hire paras? Quality paras, if the message from the top is they don't matter. There has to be intention with equity, for staff, for students, for social clubs, school clubs, special events, athletic programs. Equity is actually a board policy, your policy. 415, quote, "The governing board believes that the diversity of WUSD students, staff, families, and community members is among the district's greatest strength, and indeed, integral to the district's vision, mission, and goals." I believe in equity, I want you all to believe this is as well. Everyone that impacts special education should have a voice, including those without certain degrees, without the leadership titles, without the high-paying salaries. I would like to end tonight on a more optimistic note. The safety talks pertaining to SROs and the program have included classified employees, and I believe this was purposeful. I'd like to personally thank Dr. Burns, he was here, for allowing us to have a seat at the table and listening to our voice. Thank you for your time this evening.
Okay, thank you all. May I ask how many public comments we have this evening? I don't have it here.
We have 11 total.
Okay.
For general.
Okay. So I'm going to recommend then that we, we will be going over our allotment a little bit, but if we do two minutes a comment, then everyone can speak and we don't have to cut anyone off. Everyone okay with that? Okay. All right, can you read our first three so they can just get ready, but I'm first going to read our public comment disclaimer?
So our first three speakers are Haley Tushar, Angela Williams, and Ms. Pinky.
Perfect, and then just wait just a minute so I can read this. At our regular board meeting held on February 9, 2023, the board resolved that written public comments received by 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting will be provided to the board but not read into the record during the meeting. We have all gotten multiple comments, we've received multiple comments, and those will be in the record and we have read them as well. Members of the public may address the board on topics of our board agenda during every meeting. In addition, during regular meetings, the public may also address any topic within the jurisdiction of the board. Please know the board is listening to your comments, but by law, we cannot meaningfully respond in this forum to items not on the agenda. The board may limit the total time for public input. We are going to go a little over the 20 minutes, but we're going to do two minutes of comment tonight. The board respects the right of members of the public to speak regarding matters within its jurisdiction. However, please recognize that comments regarding students other than the speaker's own children made during a public board meeting may be a violation of the student's right to privacy, unless the speaker may be legally liable. If you reference a student's name other than your own student, you may be deemed out of order. Furthermore, it's important for the public to understand that negative or derogatory comments made against district employees or others, even those made in a public board meeting, may be actionable civil defamation. Although the board may not prohibit such comments, board policy allows the public to lodge complaints against district employees, providing more opportunity than is allowed under the open meeting law that governs this meeting. And then I am going to ask that we not accept any more public comments for this time because we're going to go over, but certainly people can continue to email and send us, and you're making your voices present by being here as well. Okay, so with that, our first comment, please.
Our first public...
Our first speaker.
Our first public speaker is Haley Tushar.
My name is Haley Tushar, and I am a 4th grade teacher at Stonegate Elementary. I am here today as a young, eager teacher with my whole career ahead of me. I am passionate about what I do and the students I teach, but I am also facing a tough reality that many of my colleagues and I are coming to terms with, the financial gap of what we're being paid and what we could be earning elsewhere. I've had countless conversations with friends and peers who work in neighboring districts, and the truth is, they're earning anywhere from $10,000 to $17,000 more per year for doing the same work. This is not an exaggeration, as you well know. The reality is, the teaching profession is already underappreciated in many ways, and when districts that are just a few miles away are offering significantly higher pay, it's hard to ignore. Truly, why would I stay? But the issue isn't just about pay, it's also about the increase in class sizes we are dealing with. As our classes get larger, the demands on us teachers only grow. More students means more work, more grading, more pressure to give every child the attention they need and deserve. One-third of my 33 to 34 students are on an IEP or 504, and most with extreme behaviors. But when that extra work is not being matched with fair support or compensation, it becomes even harder to stay. It's not just about a number on my paycheck, it's about maintaining the quality of education I can provide when my resources, time, energy, and mental health are stretched thinner and thinner every day. We already face teacher shortages and burnout, and if we continue to underpay educators in this country, and especially in this community, and increase class sizes without offering more support or compensation, we risk losing even more of our talented staff to places that are willing to invest in our futures. I love my students, I especially love my coworkers, and I want to continue giving my best in my classroom, but I need to know that the district values me and the work I do. Increasing teacher salaries isn't just a matter of financial necessity, it's a matter of showing teachers that they're respected, that our work matters, and that our futures are important to this community.
Thank you for your call.
Our next public speaker is Angela Williams.
Good evening, Board. 26 years, two schools, 832 students. I live here. Both of my kids are products of WUSD. My heart is here. I've loved working in the community. I've sacrificed hours of my family time to ensure my class gets the best of me. I have been able to watch my students grow up, become adults, get jobs, have babies of their own. I have even had the pleasure of officiating a wedding for one of my, my kids. And that's my statement. The students that come into my class become my kids. This is my community. Both of my kids are becoming educators now. My daughter mentioned to me the other day, Mom, wouldn't it be great if we could teach together? And my first response is, find a place where you feel valued. Find a home where you feel they see your worth. And I can't say that about WUSD. WUSD needs to offer us a fair salary, take care of our benefits, they need to look at how to cultivate the next generation of teachers like me. Teachers that spend their entire career here. Teachers that put their heart and soul into their classes, and the students of West Sacramento. Teachers that have extended families because of their connections to WUSD. Instead, we're losing quality teachers to districts that value their time, their commitment, and their longevity. You have to do better. Please, for the future of WUSD teachers and students, do better, because we can't wait
Our next public speaker is Ms. Pinky.
Hi, everybody. Before we start the time, you can lower the podium too, I know it's a little high. Might make it easier. And you don't... Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm writing, I'm speaking to you, I wrote you guys a letter too. On behalf of the four kindergarten teachers who volunteered to pilot the ELA programs for the district this year, last April, Sarah Jackson, Katrina Smalley, Kimberly Rotola, and I, and myself, agreed to pilot a new program for Washington Unified. Matt Ainsworth was the Director of Curriculum and Instruction at the time, and he told us that we would be spending a whole year on two different programs. And we'd have ample time to learn both the ins and outs of both programs and be well-suited to make a confident choice as to which program would best serve the students of Washington Unified. We all agree that while spending two separate years on two different programs proved to be a challenge, we're up to the task. On April 29th and May 1st last year, or this, yeah, last year, we spent three hours each day listening to sales pitches of five different programs. Of all of those five programs, they were the only ones that would do a year-long pilot. Of those, we chose the least of the worst, I guess, or the best of the worst, and those were Hooten Mifflin and CKLA Amplify. The four of us spent time before the school year exploring into reading, which is HMH, trying to get a general idea of what we would be teaching, and we started the year learning the routines of the program in addition to getting our rooms ready. Halfway through, in October, we unfortunately were told that we were going to pivot, after only teaching for two months, oh my gosh, I'm not going to finish, and we had to switch halfway through and had to compare both programs, and there are lots of holes. Neither program addresses California state standards. And we're finding out that California's not even adopting new programs until 2027. So we don't understand why we're pushing this forward so quickly. As you know, kindergarten is where we establish the foundations of reading and literacy, and neither, none of us, the four of us feel confident choosing either of the two programs. So just wanted to let you guys know, I did email you with links to different things as well.
Our next public speaker is Amanda Angel.
Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Amanda Angel, I've been a teacher in WUSD for 16 years. We've all heard the saying, "I became a teacher for the money and the fame." And while it's meant to be a lighthearted jab at the amount of effort it takes to be an educator and downplay how little we make as a result, it seems incredibly poignant to look at why we do become teachers and allow the board to consider how they can match our commitments with one of their own. The reality is that none of us became teachers for the fame or the money. We became teachers because we believe that education is the key to unlocking a brighter future, and we want to give that opportunity to students. We became teachers not really to teach lessons from books, but to teach lessons of resilience, kindness, perseverance, that lasts students a lifetime. We became teachers because we believe in the greater good of communities, of this community, and that we want our impact to make positive ripples. We became teachers because every child, your children, deserves someone who never gives up on them and who sees their worth. When you look at the type of people who became teachers, at these faces in the audience, you will see selfless, empathetic individuals who give freely of themselves, who give freely of their time, energy, mental bandwidth, and emotional capacity without hesitation. Teachers are people who give generously, often at the expense of their own time, money, families, and health. We, these teachers you see around you and all of our classified counterparts, give everything we have every single day. We don't hold back, we don't reserve our love, our time, our effort, our belief in students based on what the future may bring. Districts in the surrounding communities have realized the lasting impact of quality teachers. Isn't it time that WUSD do the same? If you truly want to retain teachers who are giving to the future of your community, start matching our level of commitment by giving a commitment of your own. Not just applaud... Not just applause and kind words, but action. Offer a financial commitment that reflects all of our values. Make a commitment with benefits that allow us to grow our families, and a salary that allows us to spend less time worrying about making ends meet and more time continuing making a difference in your students' lives.
Our next public speaker is Patrick Domek.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Patrick Domek, and I've been teaching 6th grade history in Avid for the past eight years at Stonegate Elementary. I love everything about Stonegate. Coworkers, who've become friends, admin, students, colleagues from other schools, colleagues from other schools, I even got to teach my own niece and nephew. It's all been wonderful. But I just submitted my resignation last week, effective this June. I was planning on working another 20 years and then retiring in WUSD, but I sought out employment and accepted elsewhere, in Sac City Unified School District. My decision was purely a financial one. For the family of four, we've been spending $15,000 to $20,000 a year on healthcare benefits. I am all the way over on the salary schedule. But over the next 20 years with current rates, we would have spent $300,000 to $400,000. And there doesn't seem to be an end to this rising cost of benefits, and our salaries are not keeping up with nearby districts. Please, take our union's concern seriously. I know I am not the only teacher who's been crunching numbers and looking at other options. These conversations are taking place, at home, at our lunch tables, so I encourage you to contribute more for benefits and increase salaries. I would have gladly worked in WUSD until the very end, but my family and I cannot wait any longer. Thank you for your time, I will truly miss it all.
Our next public speaker is Patrice Griffith.
So I'm here just as the co-advisor for River City BSU, and I want to respect your investment in these children and provide an update on the Washington Unified School District's Black Student Union Clubs, plural. Stonegate School has started a BSU club and held their first meeting this month alongside River City BSU students. 10 of us from the BSU attended the Black Students of California United Conference, funded by the district. River City is proud to have three students who are state-level Board members, including two seniors who serve as youth advisors, one junior who serves as a youth president, all representing over 300,000 Black students in California and their educational interests. At this conference, the only two seniors in attendance received the largest scholarships awarded, which equaled the amount the district invested in these students. So thank you for your investment. Additionally, the River City student who currently serves as youth president was informed by the BSCU Board that she will continue serving in this role for the following academic school year. Last Saturday, the BSU partnered with Wes Sac PD, and we partnered also with Wes Sac Cornhole to host Cornhole with a Cop. This has been in the works for close to two years, as Chief and I have been working together on building relationships with students and our officers. So we had 43 participants from Wes Sac PD, Yolo County DA's office, students, the River City principal, and even Mary Guerrero, who actually played cornhole with our kids. Prizes were given, raffles to attendees, and we had a free snack bar where lunch and healthy snacks were served. Approximately 150 people came to this event, and I just want to thank you again for the opportunities in our children that you're investing in so that they can continue to give back to this community.
Our next public speaker is Dr. Amber Bradley.
I'm here tonight to follow up on the recent community outreach meetings regarding the potential school resource officer in WUSD. As you recall, the Board approved funding $370,000 for one school resource officer for the entire district. During last week's town halls, we were segregated into certificated, classified, and parent meetings. Information was presented about the survey that was conducted. I asked during this meeting if the survey responses could be disaggregated based on school site, and Jay Byrne said this could be done. I asked for the data on April 2nd during the meeting and in three subsequent emails. I have yet to receive that information. We have no idea how many people responded, from what sites, or what they wanted. I also asked for a copy of the slides. This was shared with me, and then the access was removed. I didn't have time to write down all of the data during the meeting because my access was removed when I was subsequently given it. It's critical that the community know what sites are specifically requesting an SRO and what they want the SRO to do. We have 12 different sites with varying levels of need, and we shouldn't all be lumped together as one, as if we have the same view of armed police officers on our campuses. If we hire a cop, we need an office on one of our campuses. Shouldn't that cop be placed at the campus that has the most folks requesting it? Listen to your community. In the survey, 81% said that they wanted to improve the physical security of our schools. That doesn't require an SRO. SROs don't need to be there for us to lock the gates around our campus, or to close the office doors, or to follow the discipline matrix that we have already in WUSD. These town halls also said that we have called the police 30 times within the 36 weeks of schools. There was a laundry list of what for, but didn't disaggregate the data. It sounds like Wes Sac PD is doing a phenomenal job of responding already, so can we justify spending $370,000 when you're losing teachers, when you're losing paraeducators, when you're not giving your paras a livable wage? Are you really justifying spending $377,000 on one employee? Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Asia Junk.
Hi, my name is Asia Junk. Thank you for hearing me, Dr. Hildreth and President Gonzalez. For Big Gonzalez, I know I've spoken here before, it's good to see everybody. This is my seventh year in Washington Unified. In 2018, I was fortunate enough to buy my own home right over here on Michigan Boulevard, and about three months later, I landed my dream job. I got to teach 4th grade at Westfield Village Elementary School. It felt like all of my dreams were coming true. I was able to walk to work, I would see the kids in my neighborhood, I felt, I jokingly say, like the Anne of Green Gables of West Sacramento. I now work at Westmore Oaks, so I can't walk to work, but I do bike sometimes, and I love it. I'm a reading specialist, and I still get to see my students. Just yesterday, I was out and about at, like, The Nugget, and I saw three of my former students in 20 minutes, who are all now at River City. But even though this is my dream job, I'm being told by my husband, by other people, that this job is not paying me a livable wage, my family members. And it's, they're not wrong. For a person without children, this job is hard to maintain, so I can only imagine what my coworkers who have children are going through. I love my job, I would love to keep it. I'd love to stay in West Sacramento and continue to serve my community, and serve the students, and be able to see them on a daily basis, and know that my work is, they're the center of my work and my heart, but I also have to take care of myself and my loved ones. And in order to be there for them fully, we have to be taken care of as well. It's, we can't, if our glass is empty, we can't take care of others. Anyway, thank you so much for hearing me tonight, and I hope you have a great night. Thank you very much.
Our next public speaker is Molly Wong.
Sorry, it's going to take a while. This is why I work with TKers, because they're smaller than me. My name is Molly Wong, but I'm here, and I'm speaking on behalf of my partner teacher, Jennifer Black. She wrote this. She says, "My name is Jennifer, and I teach here in the district. I live and work in the community, and I love it here. I'm even lucky enough to walk to school with my child every day. When I moved to West Sacramento and started teaching here, I planned on spending the rest of my career here. However, I didn't plan on becoming a widow. Supporting myself and my child on the Washington Unified salary has proven difficult. Now I find myself looking at other school district salary schedules and benefit packages. In looking at nearby districts, I see that I could be making $15,000 more. I also see that all the work I put into earning my master's degree would earn me twice as much in other districts. I know I am not alone. As a parent in a single-income household, we teachers deserve a fair and competitive salary. Speaking as Molly, I don't want to lose my partner teacher. I am so sad that we are losing, we're losing Mr. Domek, and it's just really discouraging. I started my career here back in 1998. I taught for six years. I spent 11 years teaching preschool, and I came back here, finishing up with my husband. He joined me at Bright, I joined him at Stonegate. And it's just really sad to see so many people leaving and the discrepancies with pay. Like I said, I'm a money hoarder. I love and appreciate that you guys want to save money, and I really want to encourage you to figure out what things you can get rid of, what things are not necessary. Ask teachers. We know, we have a lot of opinions, and we'll tell them to you. Thank you.
Our next speakers requested to come up together, so there's Cindy Oseguera and Juliana Flores.
Hello, my name is Cindy Oseguera.
And I'm Juliana Flores. And we are both educators at Elkhorn. We grew up in the district. We attended Elkhorn, Westmore Oaks, and River City, and we chose to return as teachers because we genuinely love this community. And we're asking the Board to prioritize fair compensation for teachers and to focus on retaining. We came back to this district because we believe in the district, we believe in our kids. Retaining passionate educators is one of the most powerful ways to improve student success, both academically and socially. Speaking for us both, we have always dreamed of giving back to the very schools that shaped us, and we work hard to build long-lasting and meaningful relationships with our students and families. However, without competitive pay, it is becoming very difficult to retain passionate, qualified, and lasting teachers who genuinely care and understand the needs of our community. We are seeing more and more great teachers and paraeducators leave, and it's not because they want to, but because they can't afford to stay. Every time we lose a teacher, we lose time and consistency, and students feel this disruption.
And for those teachers that have stayed for so long, many that have been here for more than 20 years, despite the pay, I say deserve to be compensated fairly and competitively. We have new hired teachers getting signed bonuses, but not the teachers already here. It's not fair. We love this community, our schools, the families, and our kiddos. Imagine a district where teachers stay because they feel respected, supported, and fairly compensated, where our students have a sense of stability, where incoming teachers actually choose to teach here, not be almost forced because we are a backup plan or a pit stop. Wouldn't that be great? When teachers are compensated fairly, they can afford to stay, grow, and continue teaching with a full heart that students deserve. Investing in us is investing in the long-term strength of this district. Thank you.
Our last public speaker is Jacob Pasner.
Oh, that's the last. Oh, that's a specific agenda item, so it'll be, sorry. No, you're good. But I can also raise this. All right, I'm just going to do this.
No, well, we won't do your time yet, you can push. There you go. Okay.
Dramatic pause. Okay. I think we're getting close. I think we've arrived. All right. Hello, good evening. My name is Jake Pasner. I am a community member, and I came here because I care a lot about what's happening in this room right now. So I have two things to say to you. One is, I'm a data scientist. I work in federal, state, and local policy around the usage of data to make better decisions. So I work in many different places, all the way from the United States Senate down to the local places that we live in. I care a lot about this, I think the information matters. You've got a roomful of people that like to have information in their hands, they like to advise on decisions, they have important things to say to you. The information that they're receiving isn't sufficient for them to say, "That is useful, that isn't useful." Those details matter, and you have the ability, and in fact, the obligation as elected representatives, to provide this information to your community. Not just to the community at large, which you do have a legal obligation to provide, but also to the people who have decision authority, not your decision authority, but in the classroom. They have an obligation to those kids. And when you have union representatives standing up with information that you can't provide them yourself, you have failed them. And I don't say that because I think it's your fault. I think that if you can have it in your heart to say, "With your resources, bring those to bear. Bring those statistics to them so that they can say, 'Yes, this is useful to us. This is something we like, this is something we don't like.'" There are a lot of electronic systems that allow for people to vote on sentiment. I like that, I don't like that. If you're interested in that, I can reach out and give you the open-source free platforms that will help you do that. You have these capabilities, empower the people in this room. I'll also say, something you're doing that's great, the Spork Food Hub. I grew up organic farming here in California, small farmers. I got a scholarship and got to go to school. Okay, that is a great thing. The schools love that. The kids show up, they eat the food, you're doing a great job there. There's an example of something that you're doing well with your budget, so give them the opportunity to help you.
Okay, thank you for all of our public comments, and thank you for everyone for being here this evening as well, giving your time. We know it's quite the commitment to be here and give up your evening, so thank you again for being here and for all of your comments. That is going to take us to... Sorry, everyone, it's been a long day. It's going to take us to the information discussion item number one, our Washington Unified Special Education Task Force update. Welcome to our Assistant Superintendent of Education Services, Patrice Streak.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent, staff, and community members. This evening, I'm joined by our Special Services Director, Carla Salvo, as well as our coordinator, and a handful of WSTA members who participated in the Special Ed Task Force. And tonight, they will share with you some findings and some of their recommendations based on the work that they've done over the last few months. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Carla.
Thank you for having us. Can you hear me? Okay. Ms. Streak shared that we will be taking turns, because we were a group that came together. We just happened to have three representatives of the task force, but lots of our different members joined us today. So I'm going to turn it over to Sandra. Come back, and then they're going to have a chance to...
Good evening, everyone. Because the task force discussed the range of all of our students, preschool to 22, this touches upon all the sections of the strategic plan, so if we turn the page. Page. Oh, didn't, yep, there we go. All right. So the purpose for us is to share the purpose of the SPED task force. Our task force met five times throughout, from last February until this March. We have wide representation of certificated special education staff. We had a variety of staff, and some staff that were consistent throughout our meetings. We had a variety of staff and some staff that were consistent throughout our meetings. We had discussion of whether to include parents, but opted to keep it to staff at this time. During our meetings, we reviewed WUSD special education data, identified key focus areas that were categorized into what's working and what's already being done, what can be implemented, what needs further approval through site administrators or special education director, and what requires bargaining and negotiations. Some of the accomplishments we want to celebrate is the graduation rate increase of 7.8%. And as was noted earlier, that was a celebration of all of our staff efforts. SPED chronic absenteeism was decreased by a 5.7%. And our suspension rate also declined by 3.1%. A few other accomplishments. We had specialized professional development for our staff. We had math intervention. Our speech therapist attended CASHA for the first time. We were able to get a curriculum for, a supplementary curriculum for our high school classes. And we increased our check-ins at the site level of all of our special education department within that site. Some of the needs that we identified through the task force were caseloads, workspace challenges, professional development, curriculum needs, IP, meeting improvements, mental health support, co-teaching and inclusion, behavioral supports, leadership and communication, staffing, hiring and retention.
Next slide, please. So to give you just a little bit of basis of where our special education department has been over the last three years. We, in 2023, we had 1,096 students. And then each year since, we've continuously increased our total number. So in 2024, we increased by 65. In 2025, so far, because obviously we're not done yet, we've increased that number by 59. And then if you further kind of look to see where our students fall, in the last three years, 14 new students have entered into our special day class. And that could be a variety of ways of how they've entered our special day classes. Either they've moved into us with an IEP, with a placement of special day classes, or they've qualified and moved towards a special day class. Our Resource Specialist Program over the last three years has also increased by 57. And so that is throughout the district. It's not specifically at one specific site, it's throughout. And then 53 for our speech only over three years. And to help you break that down further, it says speech only because our speech therapist sees students who are either speech only, they only have that one specific service, or they also may have qualified for any one of the other 13 categories. And so the case manager is the RSP teacher or the SDC teacher, but they still receive related services such as speech. So the number that we're looking at specifically for speech that impacts just that caseload is 53. Next slide. This just breaks it down, just so you can see it in a graph of just what the percentage is for each of those case managers and some of the impacts for that, specifically for our SDC classrooms. It impacts our classes that support students who have extensive needs. And so because they need a smaller class size and a smaller ratio, having students move into our classes has increased that percentage, so much so that this year we had to open a kinder-only SDC class in November, just so we can allow some growth and have our classes not be as large. We monitor our caseloads throughout this school year and so we will continue to make those, to monitor those and to see where we need to make changes and growth for next year. Next slide, please. So some of the other impacts that our teachers and all of our special education professionals face is a workload and a caseload increase, just given those numbers that I just shared throughout the last three years. And so for our referrals, as students become eligible for special education, it starts with our school psychologists. Part of that initial or even the triannual evaluation, all of the service providers that provide that support are involved in that assessment process. So our speech therapist, our educational specialist, which really is under the umbrella of RSP or SDC, and even our behavior certified analyst, our BCBAs, have also grown, although I didn't add them in the specific percentage. But like our teachers have shared, that the amount of behaviors that are just increasing, their workload and their caseload has also increased, which then impacts everyone in a variety of ways, but a big impact that is felt throughout the sites across the district is the limiting space that they have to be able to provide those services, a quiet place or a quiet time to do those assessment plans. And just to give a little more context around a school psychologist, their workload, a school psychologist doesn't only support special education students, they support the entire site with a variety of tasks such as counseling, behavior support, suicide risk assessments, things along those lines. So having an increase not only in the referrals, but also in the other areas of tier one and tier two, also impacts their workload to be able to complete the compliance portion of it. And as just everything is, you know, time sensitive because of our timelines, that also just increases their workload when they get pulled away to handle other things. The next, I have, I believe, you, Boinka? Nope. Deanna Christman from Bridgeway Island, sharing the next.
Hi, Felissa, thank you. So you are looking at our RSP caseload across the district. I want you to note, this is from February, those numbers are not correct. Our caseloads have increased. CTA recommends 20 students with a cap. ED code says 28. So why is CTA different? Well, it's what's not shown on this graph. How different each child is. That 26 on Bridgway's RSP1, that might include a child who needs 400 minutes per week, that might include a child that needs 75 minutes per week. That also doesn't include behavior, behavior goals, meeting those minutes, training paras, testing, and our pending caseload. My partner teacher at Bridgway has a nice green line right there. He has 10 meetings next month. Most are initials. So those numbers, so why does CTA say 20? Because 20 is doable. 28 is tough. I have, many people know I'm leaving RSP and moving to SDC because I'm burnt out. 28 kids is a lot to take care of. So you can see our numbers, why we would put ours in yellow. Anybody in green meets where CTA states. Some of those RSPs that are in green are part-time, meaning that they should probably be closer to that yellow or red line because they have 14 at each site they're at. While they might be 14 at Bridgway, she also has 14 at Stonegate. Thank you.
All right, and this slide has the SDC caseloads. Similarly, you can see some are green, some are yellow, the red ones are the ones that are over cap. If you look at the coding, the MM stands for mild moderate needs. Those are typically a class that has up to 16 students. If we're going over that, they need more support. The EN stands for extensive needs, which is typically a class of nine. And then if you look at the PS, that's preschool. And that's what I do myself, I'm a preschool special ed teacher. And our group has a caseload cap of, not a cap, but aims to keep us at under 36. So that's 18 kids in a class. And I think that's important to recognize that when you have nine students in an extensive need class, those students often come from our program. So do the students that go into the mild moderate program or maybe RSP. Or in some cases, we are excited that they move into gen ed and don't need our support anymore. But when you look at the numbers, they don't show the amount of work that comes and the size of classes. So that's what's grabbed.
So these are speech and language caseloads. And I think the graph kind of speaks for itself, but I'm going to give you some ED code language around SLP caseloads. This one is almost 40 years old, so it's very outdated and it needs to change. But the average caseload for speech, language and hearing specialists in special education local plan areas shall not exceed 55 cases. Okay, so we have ED code language, but it's regularly not looked at. We just turn away from the fact that there's ED code on this already. And getting the caseload data has been very challenging. And, and, you know, some people might say, well, some of these sites have contractors, so why should we care? Well, because these contractors are seeing our students. That's why we should care. And also, if you try to disguise or conceal caseload data by contractors, we can't calculate the average. We need all of the caseload data. So, and also, how are we going to attract staff? Like we have, we have a contractor with 93 and why we shouldn't care about them, but where are we going to put a new hire? How can we, how can we be assured that we're not going to put a brand new speech pathologist in a huge caseload? We can't, not without a caseload cap. But that's why that's really important. Okay. And preschool, preschool is supposed to be no higher than 40. So those are all over. Preschool is all over ED code. No, there's no compliance there. And I really did want to actually start with some positives. So there are actually some positives. Where there's an overage, there is SLPA support. And, and we have since, we have actually, compared to historical data, lowered a few of the caseloads from 90s to 60s. So that's a huge improvement. And the way that was achieved was staffing with SLPs, not using SLPas or assistance as Band-Aids. Because as amazing as they are, they do not reduce caseload. They have a very limited scope of practice and the district is paying just as much money for assistance as it is for an SLP. The district deserves to get more for its money. And I think it needs to insist on getting more for its money. So, and we have an AAC team now, which really helped to reduce workload. So I want to recognize that. And our directors was instrumental in hearing our needs around that and making sure that was done. And when I needed SLPA support, I got one more extra day within a really short period of time. So this is not an attack on, on our director and I just, our district needs to do better and we need to recruit and we need to have a caseload cap to achieve that.
Can I ask, before you go, we'll ask questions, I know, at the end, but just since there was an acronym, can you tell us what that is? Is it AAC team or what that means?
Augmentative and alternative education. Oh, yeah, recruitment. Okay, so I think for all positions and hard to find positions, we can't rely on EdJoin, especially when you have SLPs that might be in Tennessee and they're moving to California. We can't rely on EdJoin. We need to use LinkedIn, we need to use Indeed, ZipRecruiter, association websites, CASHA, ASHA. We need to pull out all the stops. Where can we find them? Okay. And then also, I think a program, something that would enable a SLPA to become an SLP. And we don't have SLPA positions right now, but I mean, I know that there are SLPas who are interested in becoming SLPs, but the tuition is unaffordable. So if we could work something out where they could, they could go to school in exchange for some service time, I think that would be very helpful in terms of growing our own team. And then mentor stipends. We can't grow our own team without a certain level of supervision for clinical fellows and interns. And we don't have anything that's like BITSA or induction. We're just expected to pay forward. And with our caseloads the way they are, it makes it very challenging to just pay it forward out of the goodness of our heart. So in, in the language of equity, I believe we need some stipends around supervision and mentorship. And I think there needs to be a caseload cap for all positions. RSP has a waiver where they can say, you know what, I'm not going to take over 28. There's literally no, there's no mechanism for SLPs to say no. There is no mechanism. That's wrong. It's just wrong. And so we need for there to be a caseload cap. Otherwise, SLPs won't come near a district where there is no caseload cap. Why would they? Why should they? And SDC, the language is real murky around theirs as well. So caseload caps for all positions. You know, I really, I've become friends with the preschool SDC teachers. And my, my mind is blown knowing that SDC teachers have caseloads that go up to about 30. That's unheard of for an SDC teacher. Their caseload should be very similar to other SDC teachers. You have really easygoing and resilient staff. Really easygoing and resilient staff. That may not always be the case. Okay, and retention bonuses, I think, you know, we, that would, that would certainly help. Staff surveys. I think it's important to hear how people feel. Do they feel supported, their morale and things like that? One year we had a survey at the end of the year and I haven't seen it since. So I think that's important to have and know how people feel. Exit interviews. Why are people leaving? We had, we've, we've had a lot of psychologists leave in particular. And I think it would be very helpful to know why they're leaving. And then, yeah, mentorship programs, any kind of recognition. Good job on Psych Day, school psychologists, be awesome to see one for speech. And then compensation is huge, especially for SLPs on the bottom step. We're not competitive, we can't compete with, with contract companies, can't compete with contract companies. But all that does is just pique interest because SLPs know that school district can be a lion's den. So why are they going to walk forward without a caseload cap? That is really important. And then we would like to have our time honored, our duty day, our six-hour duty day honored. So compensate IEPs outside of contract hours.
Other recommended steps, IEP meetings after contract hours, it'd be lovely to be paid. Develop substitute rotation for IEP days so that way we can hold them during our workday and our, our fellow gen ed teachers can come. Establish monthly makeup IEP days with a program specialist. So our admin is spread thin and we cannot hold a meeting without an LEA. So it'd be great if we brought in our program specialists as the LEA once a month to make up meetings that we're missing. Provide compensation for our teachers attending, our gen ed teachers attending IEPs during their lunch and prep, because they don't want to stay at their school. So they're giving up their lunch, they're giving up their one hour of prep to be at these meetings. Establish consistency across sites. Why do some sites have daytime IEPs and some sites have no access to that because their admin said no? Promote inclusive education and student pathways. Implement co-teaching. Let's limit co-teaching to a 20% number with students of, with disabilities per class. Expand elective and vocational pathways for, for students in special day classes. Include, ensure inclusion opportunities with students with IEPs. Let's make sure our gen ed teachers know how to work with students who have needs. And let's make sure there's space in those classrooms for them. Let's strengthen our MTSS. We've already started this program, so let's strengthen it. Expand MTSS and universal design for learning, training general ed teachers. If a teacher uses UDL, they're able to reach most of their students in the way they need to be reached. It might be using speech to text that the whole class has the option to use, even though this student, it's on their IEP. If everyone gets it, no one realizes that that student is different. Develop a district-wide MTSS framework and process. Provide additional training on evidence-based programs. And general education needs support for behavior and classroom management. For me, I would say 80% of my day is behavior. 80%. And I come in because I can help my peers, but I'd love for my gen ed peers to have some of the tools that I have. And I'm not special. I have them because my son is on the spectrum. And so I have these mom tools that I know how to use. Those are easy to teach. Let's, let's bring in someone that supports that and can teach that. Thank you.
Our last slide is just to give a special thanks to all our task force members, although they're not here, able to present today. They did give us a lot of input throughout the five different meetings that we had and were able to... were able to, you know, meet us in a variety of ways. And this is a short synopsis of what our team had done through the, through the five meetings. So thank you.
Thank you. I believe we have two public comments, and then I'm sure we'll have some board questions and comments as well.
Our first public speaker is Dinah Malkin?
Malkin.
Malkin, sorry.
See, already, so, you already heard almost half my public comment. But, okay. So, yeah, I'm Dinah Malkin, I'm a speech and language pathologist. I work at Elkhorn Elementary School. At the last board meeting, I described what it was like to have 76 students on my caseload during my first year in WUSD. Burnout nearly drove me from the profession. And tonight, I want to explain why adopting an SLP caseload cap would benefit all stakeholders. Let's talk money. Because we all care about the fiscal health of, health of the district. The current model, using private agency assistance, speech-language pathology assistance for high caseloads is more expensive than prioritizing staffing with SLPs, even with contract companies. I urge you to examine this very carefully. The contract agencies currently use the most, raised rates by nearly 20% in one year. Can WUSD afford that level of uncertainty that comes with contracting? And then there are the costs of burnout costs. I mean, there are costs associated with chronic stress, staff illness, stress leaves, workers' comp claims, turnover would be expensive. If you were truly concerned about an SLP shortage, why lose, why risk losing the staff you already have? Legal exposure. When SLPs are spread too thin, therapy sessions may be canceled. IEPs may become overdue. Assessments may lack thoroughness that is needed. Not all tasks can be equally important. WUSD just authorized $4,200 for a single speech and language assessment. It's an independent education evaluation. $4,200. It was like a, like an eye wasn't even batted. And I saw it, I was like, for one speech assessment? So think about how much that could happen if you, if you, if you don't recognize how spreading somebody thin and overworking them can lead to litigation and increased costs. Costs. I got new words. All right. All right. Let's talk recruitment. SLPs have choices where they work, hospitals, private practice, in-home care, or districts with reasonable caseloads. WUSD has not hired a single SLP in three years despite three nearby SLP programs within 90 miles. No shortage can explain that. SLPs want to work where they are valued, not overworked, and expected to assume their employer's responsibility for staffing properly. WUSD needs to do something different, and a caseload cap is that difference. Build it, and they will come. And they will stay. Students benefit most when the most qualified professionals or SLPs deliver the therapy, not sitting behind a desk and having SLPAs do the therapy. Once SLPs have time to collaborate with teachers and parents, when SLPs receive more individualized support. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker on this item is Catherine Campbell.
Hello? Can you hear me? Okay. I'm sure you can. Thank you to the board for hearing me. Before I came here, I didn't have anything written down or prepared. I just know that my friends at Westmore Oaks, I'm a third-grade teacher at Westmore Oaks, are struggling. So I'm here to speak on behalf of our RSP teachers and our whole sped team. Our teachers are not being treated fairly, or legally, according to the ed code. Their caseloads are soaring, being well over the cap of 28 students. And I know that Westmore Oaks is not alone in this. Are we? No. We have increasing needs of students that need to be met, but we do not have enough teachers, time, or resources to meet them. When caseloads are over our limit, student needs don't get met, despite our teachers putting in hours of overtime. To update the excellent info that was given earlier, one of our RSP teachers is at 29, but our other is at 32, with the cap being 28. It's a constant shuffle, just to find paras or subs or anyone off the street, just to help and sit down with a group to get minutes met. It takes time to train a para in order to lead a group, just for that para to be pulled to another class the next day, the next week, as another Band-Aid fix for other students whose needs are not getting met. Our teachers are staying until 6:00 or 7:00 PM, like I said, routinely, to get their IEP paperwork done, just to start the whirlwind again the next day. And this is unfair. And after hearing this, do we really wonder why teachers are leaving our district? We're hearing about this problem of teachers leaving for Sac City Unified, and I think capping caseloads is one very crucial way to keep these hard-working teachers in our district. That's all I had.
Thank you. That will take us now to our board questions and comments. I'm opening it up to my board colleagues. Yes. We'll wait just a minute to ask your question, and then it will be Trustee Hung.
Hi. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. As I'm learning and capable of learning a lot of this information, I really appreciate this presentation at this time in my learning phase of being a board member. Can you tell me a little bit why our caseloads, we've allowed them to get so high, knowing what the ed code is, knowing what CTA recommends?
So, for special education, we are governed under IDEA. So when a parent, a teacher, a community member, specifically thinking more along the lines of our preschool, either our educational partners like Alta refer students to special education, we have an obligation to evaluate them. And so we can't turn a child away if they qualify for an IEP, because we have to service them under those obligations that we have as a local agency, educational agency. So what, what we, who we have or who comes to us and who qualifies under any one of those 13 special education categories, we have to provide services for. So we do, you know, like I shared, monitor our caseloads weekly. That's something that our SACE analyst gives both Sandra and I, and our program specialists, just to see what the pendings are, what the current caseloads are. So we just don't know what it is year, year to year, day, you know, day to day, because like someone had mentioned from the presentation, our caseloads change every week, and that's why we monitor them weekly. But when we do do our projections, when we sit down with, you know, our, our HR program directors and things along those lines, we, when we're projecting, we are looking at the projections of about 20, just to ensure that there is room for growth the following year. What I, what we don't have here, and I don't have all the numbers in front of me, is that we have steadily increased staff every year for the last five years. Across the board. And it's not just, well, speech, we, we have had open positions, so speech is a little different, but for RSP, school psychologist, BCBAs, and ARMS clinician. So across the board, we've increased that, the FTE, to be able to, to support the students that we know that we have enrolled with us. But our preschool is, if it's, if it's, if anything is very telling on the number of students that will come through our district, they do about 120 initial evaluations every year.
And that kind of goes into the next question, and I know the caseloads are changing weekly and increasing, I'm, I'm sure. It would be good to see your guys' recommendation on what the organization should look like. How many staff should we have in order to be right-sized, right? In order to reduce these caseloads to numbers that would be appropriate for the staff members? I'd like to see, you know, what is your guys' recommendation in terms of all the different types of staff? A couple of questions just on the presentation. There was a number in there, co-teaching, and the recommendation was to limit that to 20%. Is there a limit today?
There is. So when you look at the research for co-teach, it says that there should be no more than 20% of special education students in the general education classroom. So it varies depending on the, the grade level and things along those lines. Typically, you don't always count your 504 students, but they also are counted, because there are needs as well. I will say that, I don't know that 20% in our current, just current needs of students is, is a good place to really cap it. We'd have to look a little bit deeper into that.
Okay. And you guys have provided a list of recommendations. What's next at this point? So we've gotten, you know, you guys have done these analysis, but recommendations together. Where, I'm not sure who the question is for, but what's next here to try to achieve some of these recommendations?
So part of the work that the team did do, sorry if I'm hogging this, you guys could probably step in, but, so part of the work that we did do is that we came up in our very first two meetings on what, what's working and what's not. Based on what wasn't working, we did take and made goals for ourselves. We very much became an IEP team and said, this is working, these are our strengths, what are our needs, what are our goals? And so some of those accomplishments were the goals that we were able to accomplish at the start of this school year, and continue to work through some of that. What you see listed as recommendations really falls back on either negotiation, contract language, or just information for the board to make decisions to give us guidance. And a lot really is around recruitment and retention.
Okay, and then my final question slash comment are, I know you guys talked about who the task force was made up of, and there was a comment about, at this point, we decided not to include families or others. I would really like to hear from families as well, or those who are receiving our services, and their interpretation of the program, and what their challenges are, maybe from their perspective, what their recommendations would be. So maybe, you know, Task Force 2.0 or something, but to involve the community and other staff members as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So, and Carl and I have had conversations with contractors and different contractors and that. According to what I, you know, should verify it, but in order to lower all of the speech case loads, be within that, 55 or lower, we need 16 total staff. We already have five, we need nine and a half more, including the AAC. So that would lower, and that can be contracted, or it could be district, ideally district. But I mean, if you pay the same amount for SLPA and SLP, you might as well, you know, do everything you can to get an SLP. And you sometimes are therapy. Maybe they want part-time, or only 20 kids, you know, they'll, they'll have their own little caseload limit or whatever, but I want to make sure we're not turning away SLPs. So, you know, if we have 16 SLPs, we would be, have all the caseloads where they should be. And right now, we actually, so we need nine and a half more, and we have, with our SLP SLPA combination, we have over 16 full-time. So it looks like we're overstaffed. We look like we're overstaffed, because most of them, a lot of them are SLPAs, 44% of them are SLPAs. So we have an inexpensive, we have an expensive model, we have one that's a lot SLPAs, and then, you know, it's not really the best for our students. The same way if you went to a doctor, you wouldn't all want all your care to be provided by a physician's. You know, so we, we need to be getting SLPs whenever we can, any way we can. And caseload caps are really critical for recruiting our own.
Okay. Trustee Wong has a comment or question?
I, I think you actually just answered it, but the question was maybe for the district. Some of you know this, others don't, that actually my child was, was a, in our program. Really wonderful staff, and I don't think any of us really want contracting out, but can the district share our efforts in trying to recruit for these positions? Because I do believe that we have a shared interest in making sure that we're not contracting. So.
Yeah, we've, yeah, our department has partnered with HR to be creative in how we are able to recruit our highest-needed positions. So not only speech therapists, but also our extensive need STC teachers, those have been hard to fill. So we've partnered with all of the surrounding colleges that have those, those degrees and programs. We've also gone to a number of job fairs. We've, we crashed Kasia from the idea from Dinah and some of the other speech therapists that went to the training or that conference last year. So we were able to, to go there. We went to, we've gone to different universities in, in hopes to, you know, get them right from, right before they head out into the workforce. And then we've also just continued to reach out to the colleges and have partnered with them to get interns. So that way, we have the first kind of go at supporting them with internships, and then in the hopes that they would want to stay on with the school.
Thank you. Yes.
Any other questions?
I'll ask a question. I heard a lot about behavioral, behaviors. Do we have one on every site, or is it just, why not? Why is that not being?
We have three, we have three behavior analysts for the district. And so, so they're not at every site, but they do divide the, the sites out, depending on kind of the needs of students. But our, our school psychologists are also trained to handle the, some behaviors, and there is a school psychologist on every site.
Yes.
You know, with behavior, if our BCBAs were able to go site to site and train, and we had one inclusion specialist per site, that might be something that would help then train teachers on what to do. So I'm lucky that I worked with BCBAs so closely in my own home, that I have those, some of those skills. It's easy enough to train someone. If we had an inclusion specialist, they could go into a gen ed room and say, here's what you do when a student is, you know, when they're dysregulated. Here's what you do when your student is kicking their desk, screaming, crying, refusing to leave the room. Here's how you handle that in a safe manner, you know, honoring that child's dignity. So, using our BCBAs to create a role perhaps within each site, that'd be excellent.
That's what I was gonna, is that something we could, like, realistically look into?
Our BCBAs do do quite a bit of training. Right now, the, the, we just recently hired on our third BCBAs. We've had two for the last two years. Third BCBAs currently is supporting our preschool and kinder, just to kind of work with our youngest students that will be transitioning into PK or kinder next year, to really help them be successful. And then the, the plan moving forward is to continue to grow that across the board. Another piece that I will share is that our BCBAs spend a lot of time not only training our ed specialists and our general education teachers, but they spend a lot of time training our para educators, because they are the ones who do the heavy lifting around supporting our students with behaviors. Some of them are one-on-ones with our students, and so they need to know that behavior intervention plan, like the back of their hand, because they're the ones who are called on first to support students in, in, in need.
I think all of the other questions were asked. And we're not gonna be, you're, you're not looking to, the district, we're not gonna be phasing out this, the SDC programs anytime soon, right?
That is not our current recommendation, though. I, I think- our paraeducators, because they are the ones who do the heavy lifting around supporting our students with behaviors. Some of them are one-on-ones with our students, and so they need to know that behavior intervention plan like the back of their hand, because they're the ones who are called on first to support students in, in need.
I think all of the other questions were asked. And we're not gonna be, you're not looking to, the district, we're not gonna be phasing out this, the SDC programs anytime soon, right?
That is not our current recommendation, though. I think if anything, what the department and our goal is, is just ensuring that students have more inclusive opportunities within that general education, because that's, you know, where they, they learn their best is along peers. But we do recognize that there are times that students need a smaller, quieter place to be in order to be successful. And so we'll push them to their, with, along with their strengths, to be able to access that general education.
And I've heard that, you go to your point, how there is, aren't a lot of spaces, like quiet spaces, and you're sharing currently, like on different sites, right, with?
Yeah, so our.
What are we doing to, is the district addressing that or getting to that, or trying to figure something else out?
I mean, we are trying, we work closely with our facilities and to ensure that we're utilizing and maximizing all of our spaces as best as possible, and still taking our students' needs into consideration on where we place students. So if we do open another classroom, we are very conscientious of where that classroom is, what that classroom looks like, what the lightings are like, because we do understand our students' needs. So we do the best we can, but there are just sites and limitations that, you know, are beyond our control.
One last comment or question? I hope you don't mind, but the contractors that, that we hire, how, what is their, or how is their relationship with our staff at our sites? Is it, are they, do they work together?
Yeah, I think that for the most part, all of the teams work closely together, because that's just the nature of the job. But every team is unique in its own way, and there are areas probably for improvement in some over others.
And then we monitor that, the district, and they do, we heard about surveys, are we doing, is that gonna be a possibility to do a survey for our staff too?
Yeah, I don't see why not. I can definitely work with, with HR or with head leadership to kind of figure out how we do that.
Okay.
Within the department, we do surveys to just, you know, see what the, the staff needs and things along those lines, but we've, I don't know that we've targeted specifically around the relationship or the communication. Thank you.
All right, we're moving around, Trustee Wong.
So I, you said that there, one of the things that would be best would be to have one inclusion specialist at each site, so that they can provide the special, you know, trainings when needed. Would that be kind of similar to that of parent-led, how they, how you had have had parent-led behavior therapy?
No.
Okay. I'm gonna ask you to speak in the mic, so that way the audience can hear.
Sorry, the tools can be the same. It's things like deep breathing, calming techniques. It would be, I mean, it would be nice, because we have wonderful BCBA's. I have them on my phone, and I can text them in a minute, and they're texting back.
Okay.
But, you know, they're spread thin too.
Right.
So it would be nice to be able to say, whoa, we have a, we have a fire in room seven, let's go now, two of us to handle this, calm it down, and then talk later about what, what the.
What could have done, what could have been.
What could have been done.
Yeah.
So some of the things, you know, I just learned as a parent, work well with all kids. I don't have all the answers, and I have a very limited toolbox right now.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out, because you're, that was one of your recommendations, and I'm, I'm also looking into my toolbox, as I do recall having to do these things with my son. And they were like, this is what you do, and this is how you handle those types of situations. If this, one particular person at each site was to be able to have like that direct with your behavior analysts, it's almost like the tiers, right? So they would give it to your inclusion specialist, your inclusion specialist who are onsite, can go to those particular classrooms, don't want them to be run thin. So is one per site something that would also be enough, or, because if it's just giving you that training on how to, I'm just trying to figure out the best approach in my mind of like tiers, of how this would trickle, and understand what it is your, what you truly would like to see?
As an RSP teacher, I would like to be able to have my staff have more than just my limited knowledge.
Okay.
To be able to say, hey, we can do this exercise, we can prevent that behavior with this. If, you know, and that's just, just thinking about an inclusion specialist, you know, which we didn't talk about as this task force, so I apologize, but, you know, that knowledge, being able to pass that on, that's, that would be, I think, a big, big piece that could help all of us.
Okay.
And I think one would be enough at most sites. We have 1,100 kids at Bridgeway, and there are four RSP teachers, two SDC teachers. You know, we can only share so much with our gen ed staff.
Yeah, so now my question is, one of my questions to our district, Dr. H, is this something at some of the sites that we could do with our community schools funding, using with maybe one of our partners? Just something to look into, perhaps, like with certain types of services for behavioral therapy of some sort? I'm just curious to know if that's an avenue that we could?
That's, that's definitely something that we can look into. What's the, what's done with the community schools is the school community determining what their need is? And so looking at what they're thinking about with the needs assessments that they've done, and then determining cost, their budget, things like that, but it is something that we can ask them to look into.
Yeah, because one of the reasons why I'm bringing that up is because if your numbers, if I'm looking at them correctly for the school side and the caseloads, you have your Elkhorn preschool that is heavily impacted, and one of, because you said SP means, or not SP, but PS means the preschool one, correct? Okay, so based off of your CDC caseload and your RSP, most of them look like Elkhorn was pretty high up there in the numbers. And if those are, one of them is our community schools, perhaps we can leverage our community schools' resources to help provide that, the support that is needed at those particular sites.
Yes, yes, so we will ask Director Flores.
Okay.
To look into that and as, as we're looking at all of these recommendations and what we can do.
Okay, that is it. Thank you. I'm trying to make it quick.
Sorry, one more. When I mentioned the right sizing and how much staff we need, thank you for that response, but also meant, like just looking at the full picture, including these behavior analysts and inclusion specialists, right? If, when we get that, those numbers, if we could include those types of positions to per site, would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay. I think, well, let me go first, because it's, and we also have a long way and a lot of people, but, so I think for, this is a lot of information to unpack, you've shared a lot of things, and we could spin all night, we'll be here all night probably anyways, in terms of going through and helping with this. And I think the most effective way for me is when could we have something like a three to five-year action plan? Could it be your task force that does that? What would be a reasonable time to see some first steps of what we think are doable that would also involve classified staff? So that would be my question, Dr. Hildreth, and maybe you can talk on that, and then come back to us and let us know, when would be an appropriate time to really think about an action plan now that we have all these recommendations? And as we know, sometimes we can, we try to do all things, we might not do them all well, right? But what are the places that we can start here and then continue to move so that we take the burdens off, and so that clearly there's some things that are just not appropriate for our kids and for our staff here? And so I'd like to put it on staff to look at what those first steps would be. Does that sound fair? Okay, and then report back to us sometime. Okay. Okay, thank you for giving your evening this evening and for your time. I'm gonna ask, since our lawyer's here, for a point of privilege. We have a student who's here, and we'll probably do a little bit of moving around anyways at action items when we see who's here. But, you know, it's bedtime, and so soon probably, I imagine, at least in my household. So I'm wondering, could we move, could we have a public comment come, even though there's an action in isolation, so that they can get home for the evening? Would there be any reason we couldn't do that? It's action item number six. Okay, so I'd like to allow, to make, for my colleagues, that we would have a public comment now that we would allow for action six, take a pause so that you can come up and speak, and then we'll still have the same agenda item more later, but you can go it when you need to, and then we'll go into our information discussion, item number two.
So our, his name is Marcus, how do you say his last name?
Menzies.
Menzies? All right, Marcus Menzies, and they're speaking on action item P6.
And Marcus was paying attention, he's already figuring out how to lower the.
My name is Marcus Menzies. Today I want to stand up here and tell you how important VUVA has been. I'm a fourth grader, and this is my fourth year in VUVA. It has given me the opportunity to have a great learning experience regardless of my health issues. I love VUVA and all my teachers. They have taught me all things about math and any subject as you could imagine. I am grateful, I'm grateful to be able to do virtual learning and focus on my health at the same time. Without VUVA, this wouldn't be possible. I want to appeal to make sure that VUVA will continue to serve other, other students in the future, because I want to be able to return as a fifth grader to VUVA this fall. I hope this message reaches to you, because you can make a difference in our community. VUVA is worth fighting for, and that's why I have been here tonight. Thank you for your time.
And then our next speaker is Mai Menzies.
Good evening, esteemed members of the school board. I am, I can't imagine what going through and how much weight is on your shoulders, sitting here tonight, hearing what the speakers have to say, the support staff, and all the entities that support the school district, and the grievances that they shared. I can only stand up here as a parent and speak in terms of my grievances, but I can tell you this, is that as we gather here tonight, I listened, and I listened. And after hearing what other speakers and teachers express, I realized everything ties together, that it's a ripple effect. And at the end of the day, I think we all have the same vested interest, which is our children, our students, and our kids, and how we can do better as a tribe to provide what we can provide to make it the best it can be for them. So I wasn't gonna share this aspect of it in tonight, you know, in speaking tonight, but I wanted to share this, because this is how it tied to how we got to VUVA. And I think it's important to understand the background of it. In 2019, he was in preteen. I have four others that gone through the system. I moved here, I am, you know, I got lost in the knife town, West South, and I stayed, and I raised my kids here. And this is our home. And it was disheartening when our homeschool had us, had a difficult time, you know, managing within the classroom, because now I understand they themselves have difficulties in feeling as though they don't have the support they need. And it does affect students, because one of the teachers actually spoke tonight, was one of the teachers that said, your child is not cut for public school. And that hurt. And then she offered a little note and said, you should try these outside. And how did this become, get to this point, was because he was being bullied every single day. And through being bullied every single day, he, one day woke up and said, I don't want to go to school anymore, mommy. I love school, but I don't want to go to school anymore. I don't want to get hit again today. So I volunteered for two weeks, encouraged him to go, and I said I would be present as well. And I see the dynamics in the classroom, the racial teachers, the amount of support they get. As I'm talking to the teacher, she's holding back while this boy's kicking and crying and screaming, so it takes away from the, the focus. And so I decided to wait until he turned six. You know, maybe he'd be a little more mature enough to, you know, fend for himself, because the suggestion was that he should be put on modified behavior to push back, to stand his ground, because there's not enough support to support him. So instead of that child being modified in behavior, my son was suggested to be modified in behavior.
I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap it up, but I'm sorry. But, and you can also email us the full piece too, but.
So I'll read the last piece then. So I'm just grateful and thankful that VUVA came around. We started with VUVA from its conception, and it's been a lifeline, you know, and I can't emphasize anymore how wonderful it's been. It's to students who face accessibilities, challenges, and that prevent them from accessing traditional education. Every student deserves an equal opportunity to learn, grow, and succeed, regardless of their physical or personal circumstances. Virtual Academy has been a game changer for students who struggle with bullying, medical conditions, and family obligations that make it difficult to attend traditional schools. It provides a safe, supportive, inclusive environment for students to thrive academically and emotionally. While the budget restraints are a reality, I urge you to please consider maintaining and keeping the Virtual Academy program. By investing in innovative education, we're investing in the future students, our community, I implore you to consider the human impact of the closing of the Virtual Academy. For many students, this program has helped permanently. But thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you both. And thank you, Marcus, for speaking as well, and being very confident in doing so. Well done. Okay, thank you. And that now takes us to our enhancing school safety, and that's our district-wide updates and initiatives. Dr. Burns, our Director of Special Programs and Student Services. Welcome.
Real quick, that was outstanding, young man. That was outstanding. Board of Trustees, thank you for having us tonight. Superintendent, thank you for having us. We're gonna talk tonight about enhancing school safety, district-wide updates and initiatives. Next slide, please. Basically, I don't want to read to you, but you can see how everything in safety aligns with our strategic plan. The kids need to be safe. Okay, next slide. And then you can tell where it goes into our pillar D. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so tonight, we're gonna talk about the School Resource Officer Program Survey Insights, Town Hall Meeting Input, and then School Safety Implementations. Next slide. The WSD and the West Sacramento Police Department will collaborate to improve safety and security for students, staff, and the educational environment. A budget of $377,000 has been allocated for this initiative, for this program. The allocating funding will cover various costs associated with the SRO program, including officer salaries, training expenses, necessary equipment. Next slide. So we did a survey. We surveyed our, our staff and parents, our community. Okay, next slide. Total respondents, 483. And you can see the breakdown, 389 were parents, caregivers, staff members, 107, and then other was 22. No, you can have some who were both, you can have some who are both. So if you look at it, you're gonna say to yourself, this isn't totally up correctly, but you can be a parent and a staff member. Okay, next slide. And then we broke it down to which schools are you affiliated with, and you can see the breakdown. We've given a minute so everybody can look at it. Okay, next slide. How familiar are you with the concept of a school resource officer? Very familiar? 61%. Somewhat familiar? 33%. Not familiar? Not familiar, oh, 55%. Next slide, please. Now, here's the key one. On this one, you check the boxes for the main roles of the School Resource Officer Program, up to five options per respondent. And you can see from this, the top one that they picked was physical security and emergency procedures. Then it goes from there to threat assessment and prevention, active shooter response, building positive relationships, and down, the escalation techniques, all the way down. Next slide, please. Now, do you have any additional comments? You can see that we had a myriad of comments. Some strongly support the SRO presence, especially at high schools. SRO seen as deterrents to crime, safety enhancers, and positive role models, emphasis on the importance of safety for academic success. However, there were also concerns, worries about SRO training and suitability for educational settings, concerns about handling mental health crises, and addressing students' needs, especially for students of color and those with disabilities, fear of racial bias and disproportionate impact on marginalized students. And then there were mixed feelings. Some opposed the SRO program, suggesting resources can be better used elsewhere. Others believe an SRO is necessary at high schools, particularly River City High for security and student safety. Next slide. So then we had our town hall meetings. We had three in person, broken up. We had classified, certificated, and then parents. And then we got feedback and said, "Hey, we need to cross over." So then we did our virtual meetings. And even the last night, for the parent, we said, "Anybody can come," right? That was feedback we got. So then we did also virtual, classified, certificated, and parents, and let them cross over. So here's our insights from the town hall meeting. Okay, these are when we had the meetings. Okay, next slide. So look at this, summary of recommendations from town hall meetings, timeline for hiring, onboarding, and training officers. That kept coming up, kept coming up. What's the timeline? What's the timeline? Campus safety and support, they kept asking, "How many campus safety monitors do we have at River City High?" Right? And you can see, two have been added in the last two years. And then they had the question about the MOU to ensure that there's program continuity. They don't want a one and done, that came up. Clear communication and program direction. Then we talked about equity, restorative practices in school culture, concerns about racial disparities and suspensions, emphasis on staff training to address cultural biases, restorative practices prioritized over disciplinary action, right? Can we change behaviors? Community, student, and parent engagement. Support for SRO presidents to address behavior issues and enhance safety. Need for parental education on the SRO role and improved communication. Then there was questions about the budget and funding. $377,000 allocated for one SRO, funding model still being finalized. Previous MOU split costs between the WSD and the city. Letter of intent has been submitted. Data transparency and measures, exploration of vape sensors, increased restroom monitoring due to student activity. Lot of questions about vape sensors and getting the restrooms back. Next slide. Then we asked to get student insight, right? So we reached out to the schools to get student insight. Next slide, and this is some of the insights we took away from the students. Students see an on-campus SRO as a way to build trust and improve law enforcement's image. Benefits include deterring unsafe behaviors and enhancing safety. Concerns involve cost, false reports, conflict, and an intimidating presence. Many students were unfamiliar with the program with few concerns. Some see the SROs as useful for identifying unsafe items. Preference for an on-demand SRO presence, not constant, came up. Interest in building connections and learning about law enforcement. Okay, next slide. Safety implementations. So over the past few years, we've done what's called behavioral, not behavioral threat assessments. We did site vulnerability assessments. We had our site safety consultant, Jason Johnson, come out and do these. A former police officer who's trained in site hardening. Next slide. And as you can see, some of the things that came out of these safety enhancements, things that we've done over the years, staff training. We train with our safety consultant on standard response protocols. Right there, "I love you guys" protocol. Fencing and other security measures, we've improved some of our fencing. We've improved some of the crash bars so kids can't get in around the fences, things that were identified in those site vulnerability assessments. Up-to-date school emergency maps, once again, working with the safety consultant on what these emergency maps look like. Up-to-date school safety plans, consulting with the PD on the school safety plans, consulting with the fire marshal, consulting with our safety consultant. Vulnerability assessments that I talked about. We tip anonymous reporting. If you look on our webpages, each school site, if you walk on our campus, we're encouraging the kids to use the anonymous tip, right? Bullying, vandalism, unsafe behaviors, all part of that anonymous reporting, trying to get parents, kids involved in reporting and being anonymous. Next slide. Increased frequency of emergency drills, goes back to the standard response protocols. Our safety consultant has actually gone to school sites and supported them and helped evaluate the emergency drill, right? And catapult EMS is part of that. That's the communication system we're using on campus in the event of an emergency. Active threat training tied to the standard response protocols. Staff trainings for physical and mental health. Emergency kits, we talk about buckets and backpacks, right? Those buckets and backpacks we talked about in the classroom. And then back to the standard response protocols. And then mental health resources, crisis support, wellness centers, counseling services. Next slide. One of the things that we keep talking about is we've been researching vape sensors, right? This keeps coming up, vaping, vaping, vaping. So we're demoing some vape sensors. We're working with technology and Mr. Briggs's department, Director Briggs, and we're actually downloading some vape sensors. We placed them in a couple bathrooms on the campus. And then we have another one coming to us from another company, yeah, another vendor, too. We want to check them out and see. Parent education, on the 23rd, April 23rd, we're going to have a parent education night about vape. Okay? Testing, once again, the demo units. Detection, once again, we, vendors are being explored for detection canines to identify vaping devices, right? Substance abuse, THC on campuses, illegal substances, controlled substances. Next slide. Thank you. You like how I read that one?
Okay, thank you. I believe we might have some public comments. And while we're waiting on the public comments, I'll just give people a moment to hear this as we've decided we'll look to move Action Item Five to number one. So the petition of the renewal for Washington Middle College, the closure, item number six, which is adoption of the resolution regarding VUVa. That's item number six, we move that to two. And the approval of the increase of Elkhorn Village modernization, that's item 10, we'll move that to three. So we're just going to move a couple of things up because we're looking at the audience and who's here. Okay, so public comments.
We have one public comment request, and it's from Dr. Amber Bradley.
Okay, welcome.
So my public comments now are more of just questions for the presentation that I just saw. Okay, so when we had the town hall last week, we asked Dr. Hildre specifically about student engagement. And by "we," I mean another teacher, it wasn't me who asked. You responded that we would be having a survey for students later on, that we weren't going to be using the same questions. We were going to craft one that was more appropriate for children. As far as I know, this survey has not gone out, hasn't gone out to my students, as far as I know. So when we say we have student insight, where is that coming from?
I'm going to, I'm just going to ask you to direct your questions here, and then we'll answer them after when we're done, but.
I'm sorry, is that not what I'm doing?
What?
Is that not what I'm doing?
I, I thought you were engaging or looking for an answer.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just simply, I'm, I'm just saying, she made these comments. So I was just referring back to what she said during these meetings. I wasn't expecting a response to the public comment. I know I don't get responses, that's okay. As far as I know, we had no direct plan, as was stated in the meeting, for gathering information from students at that point. We know we're going to get data from students, but at that point, we had not conducted a survey. We said we were going to create one, and it was going to be given out to students. As of that meeting last week, on the second, we had no survey. So I'm just curious where this student insight is coming from. And then as far as the concerns about staff getting training on implicit bias, getting training on racism, getting training on targeting of marginalized students, we don't do that. That's part of the problem. That's part of the whole Be the Change campaign that happened at River City last year. That's part of the whole Stop the Hate campaign. Our teachers, our administrators, nobody has training on restorative justice. Our marginalized students are being targeted. They are victims at our school, and we are not doing anything about it. That needs to be addressed first and foremost. We also talked about the actual safety of the school, making sure that we have proper training on drills. We don't even have drills at River City anymore. We don't have fire drills at River City. That does not happen. It hasn't happened in years. The fire alarms go off so often at River City that our administrators claim that we don't have to have the fire drills because the fire alarm went off, and that counts as the fire drill. Those fire alarms, when we go off, staff don't even take them seriously anymore. Students don't take them seriously, staff don't take them seriously. We have no formalized protocols. We don't follow the protocols. Teachers hold up their red sticks or their red signs saying they don't have their kids. Nothing happens. We don't take attendance. We don't find where the kids ended up. It is mayhem that is happening out there at River City. These are not issues that can be solved with an SRO. We have systems in place. They need to be followed at River City. Okay? The buckets and the water, I asked Jay Burns specifically about the water. The supplies that we were supposed to have when we have a lockdown. Teachers have expired supplies in their room. We don't have water in our classrooms. We have had hour-long lockdowns before. Four hours we have had at River City where students have been locked in classrooms. We don't have water to give them right now. And we were told that we don't have the money for it, but we have $377,000 for one cup. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and there's no other public comments?
Okay, no public.
Okay, then I'll open up to my board colleagues. And I don't know if. We have someone ready. I'm looking, I see notes coming, so I expect there are comments versus none. Okay. Vice President Coffey?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and I'll start. Thank you for all of this information. I'm going to kind of piggyback a little bit off of the public comment. I thought regarding, I thought the same thing that we were going to get, or that there was going to be a student survey later, or, because I'm just, it kind of threw me off because I didn't think that we were going to have student insight. So one of my questions was, where did that come from? Because my understanding, we hadn't questioned our student.
The student insight came from the leadership teachers throughout the district, meaning with their students.
Okay, so these are more from our leadership student?
Primarily, yes, correct.
Okay, just, just wanted to get clarified, clarified that because that was, that was my understanding. With the schools that were affiliated, because I saw that you said for, like, are you responding as a parent, staff member, or other? You said that there could be.
Yeah, can we go back to the?
It's like, it's like the survey insight, I don't know what, seven. I'm going to try to make this really quick because I don't want to take too much. Yeah, well, I'm going to go to this one, too.
Yeah.
So, but we can, yeah, this is fine, you can stay here. But in the previous one, it said, you, you mentioned how there was like some overlap. So there are some who would be a parent and a guardian, as well as a staff member or other. With this one, which schools are you affiliated with? Was there also overlap, is what I wanted to know? Or is it just one? Because I have two, and I don't remember because it's been a very long time since taking the survey, and I don't remember what I.
You could check more than one box.
I think it was, right?
You weren't limited, you weren't limited.
So this, this reflects, like, maybe somebody who has a high school or as well as a kid, somebody at Westmoreau, or, right?
Or someone who works at River City but has a student at Westmoreau.
Okay, okay. All right, so that was one of my questions. And then, and then, gosh, I was trying to be, and then page number 10? Or slide 10, I'm sorry. With this particular one, I noticed that even though, like it says, 81.2%, all the numbers are very much, very similar, pretty, you know, minus the number one physical with 392, but everything else is close to like 300. What was my question? Don't even remember right now. It's late. I'm just going to go ahead and pass.
You're okay, though, if you think of it.
I will let you know, okay? But yeah, I'm good right now.
Okay. Okay, do you have any questions? Or, Kirk Castro?
I do, actually. We wrote the letter of intent to the city of West Sacramento back in January, is that right? Have we heard back from them yet on any of the information? Or have we provided this to West Sac, city of West Sacramento also?
I can address the data part. Yes, they've been involved and seen the data, having talks about the data. We had meetings leading up to the town hall meeting to plan.
With the, with the police department.
With the police department.
No, the city.
Oh, not the city, I'm sorry, I thought you meant.
Not West Sacramento, the city of West Sacramento, yeah.
No, no.
I mean, because we want to collaborate with funding, shouldn't they have this information, too?
So I can share that Mayor Guerrero was at the town hall and spoke about, there was a discussion, I believe, maybe in the city council meeting in March, perhaps, where they were interested in getting some more information. And so we will be having some follow-up meetings with the city. And she shared that their budget decisions happen, will be happening in June.
Okay. I think I'm good now.
Thank you.
My only question is, what's next? Now, we've gathered all this data. Aside from, I think we, we need to do the student survey properly across all of our students, or at least high school, middle school, maybe. Yeah, what, what's next, right? This funding has been allocated for next school year. So it would, I would like to see that piece of it. If we can implement the SRO program, what is that going to look like? When do we start having those discussions? By the fall, if we cannot implement an SRO program by the fall, what can we implement? What can we do with the funding that has been set aside? We've heard a lot about training that isn't happening. We've talked a lot about other options. So I think for me, I would like to see what the plan is moving forward after we've gathered this data and.
Definitely. And that keeps coming up, right? What's next? What's the timeline? What can we do in lieu of having an SRO hired that comes coming up? But what can we do leading up to that? What kind of things? And that's going to be a discussion, and that keeps coming up with the chief. That keeps coming up, school district, and we need to set up, sit down, and figure out where do we go next? What can we do? How long is this going to?
Kirk Castro?
No, one of the things, it's just more of a comment because we heard from Chief Strange, and Mayor Guerrero was at the River City meeting, in-person meeting. And I, I just want to emphasize that, I mean, he did say, out of his own mouth, you know, he would rather not rush to fail, right? But I, I think we still have to move forward with figuring out what it is that we're going to do with the funds that were allocated. So just, I know we, so much, I'm like trying to pull from my brain, and it's late, too. If we want the city of West Sacramento to be able to partnership with us, I think, I think we should have them have this information sooner than later as well. Because they're, they are pretty busy in their planning and strategic, or in their strategic planning. And I would like to know where they stand, either way. I appreciate Chief Strange being at the meeting and always sticking to, you know, what, what he said. And I think Jason did a great job at explaining what an SRO looks like. And he was really thorough with his explanation. So I was hoping that there would be more attendance than what there was, but there were a lot of people there. But I think that's it for now. I mean, just continue to give us the information.
Can I make a, an additional response to the question about what's next? So if our initial intent was to make our school safer and to strengthen our relationships with our police department, one of the things that is next is to review our site. one of the things that is next is to review our site vulnerability assessments, continue to review those and see which are the highest priority hardening measures that we can do now to make sure that our, um, campuses are as physically safe as possible. So that's an ongoing, um, conversation with student services, ed services and the school sites. Um, as well as we heard one of our community members talk about, um, a community engagement event we had at River City this weekend, um, where we saw the police department engage with our, um, students. Students of all backgrounds were there, um, and participated. And so we're looking to increase those kinds of opportunities as well. But those are just two things that are some immediate next steps to address your, your question.
Thank you. I think, um, I think we need some next steps, um, though also, um, sooner. We did say in the fall when we set aside the money, um, I went back and watched and we said, um, immediately start surveying. Let's get feedback, let's get feedback. And so I think the student survey, um, let's get that done right away. And then I think it, um, you have a, I was really impressed also by the town hall. We, uh, were both clerk Castro and I at the town hall, uh, with families. Um, while it would have been nice to have more families, we did have, um, a good vocal group that was there too, that was very engaged. Um, and asked a lot of good questions and gave a lot of good impact put. And I really want to thank too, not only our staff, you all for being at all of those meetings. That was a lot that just happened. Also, the police chief was there and his task force was there. And I mean, they have dedicated so much time and I'm just really grateful for all, there's been a lot of hours that have gone into this. And so I want to really thank you for that. Um, if we're not ready, you know, if they're not ready to make a hire right away, just like with us, when we have a position that we can't fill right away, it doesn't mean that we don't have a job description, we don't have those pieces, we don't work on that. That needs, I think, to be worked on so that we can bring it to our students. We've done that before with other things with our students, here's our policy, help us look at it. What does this MOU look like? What are our ideals that we want in an MOU? Uh, what would be in it? I think that needs to start happening, um, so that we can have discussions about it using all of this feedback, um, that we've been getting about the concerns as well as the needs.
Can I ask a question for clarification?
Yes.
For the student survey, we want to be, we, we're trying to be mindful of survey fatigue. The kids have just finished this week.
I know.
Taking their second SEL survey for the year. Um, do you have a timeline in, in, in mind? Um, are you, and then cast testing is in, in session now too for our high schoolers and it's gonna happen a couple of weeks after spring break for, um, our third through eighth grader. So that's my first question. And my second question is, um, it blew out of my brain, it'll come back.
Okay, well, why, maybe then, um, Dr. Hildreth, as well, you meet with the students. I know you said our leadership students, which is a great group, but I know you also meet with students at Yolo, River City, Washington Middle.
Yeah.
Is that going to be, can that be a group then that we gather some, but maybe that would be more meaningful to, um, I hear what you're saying and, uh, what would be the most meaningful way to get good student data?
So, uh, uh, I will be meeting with my, um, advisory groups, probably in, looking to do that in May, just as a, a follow-up, closing the loop of the things we've talked about. Um, but I'm, I'm interested in broadening the base. So it's not just the students in the advisory. And I really would like to also make sure we focus on our middle schoolers. So I would like the team to do something more for six through 12. Um, and maybe using the advisory focusing on, um, just, you know, that more anecdotal, uh, data, but really getting some concrete, uh, feedback. I, I, I go back to the student survey we've done for the strategic plan, for the healthy kids survey that our kids have things to say. So I want to make sure that we honor their voice and do it in a way that gets that broad feedback. Um, even though my advisory kids are great, um, I just want to make sure as many voices as possible are the ones that we, um, can provide you with feedback on because it's such an important topic.
Do you think it's reasonable that that feedback happens by, um, what would be a reasonable timeline? Um, I know we have spring break, would it be, um, by mid-May, by early May?
What I would ask, um, if we could talk to our admin teams and knowing all the things that are going on in each school and maybe coming up with a window where that allowed the flexibility of whatever the schedules are at the schools, but to give a window and also to make sure that we're, um, having our teachers know why we're doing this survey and, you know, so that we're getting that level of engagement. It, it is for purpose of safety and we want to make sure we're hearing their voice. So I can provide an update to trustees once we talk to, um, admin and see what's happening at the schools.
And it can be, you know, if you ask the right questions, it doesn't have to be long.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be long, but just honoring, um, broadening the, the feedback.
I think, um, given we're gonna be having conversations, um, shortly, um, to clerk Castro's point tomorrow, um, in terms of with the city manager as well and mayor and other pieces. Um, but I think that in terms of their timeline, we'll have maybe some more information tomorrow when they need it. Uh, but I think it's important to find out from them exactly when they need it for their budget cycle as well that's happening, um, too. And then we'll report back.
And I remembered my other question, but Dr. Hildreth answered it in terms of what grade levels did we want to survey? And so I'm hearing sixth through 12th grade.
Does everyone feel good with that? Okay, anything additional? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so that takes us now to our consent agenda. And then as a reminder, our first action item, just so folks get ready, is gonna be item number five is moved to one. Um, okay, so the consent, is there anything to remove from the consent change? Thank you, a motion to approve? Um, made by clerk Castro, seconded by trustee Wong. Uh, I have to roll call vote because trustee Wong is virtual, so trustee Wong. Clerk Castro.
Aye.
Vice President Coffey. Trustee Hunt.
Aye.
I too vote aye. Thank you. And now that takes us to action items. So again, we're gonna do action item five is gonna be moved to one. Six is moved to two and 10 is moved to three. And we'll go in order. Okay, so. Adoption of resolution number 242540, approving the petition for the renewal of the charter for Washington Middle College High School. Monique Stovall, our chief business officer.
Thank you. This evening I will be joined by, uh, Bill Schutz from our legal team, DWK, to provide information about the charter. In addition, um, our principal from Washington Middle College and also some representatives from the Middle College to also present.
Good evening trustees, uh, glad to be here. Just, uh, as we kind of discussed at the last meeting, Washington Middle, uh, College High School is a charter operated by Washington Unified. Uh, petition was submitted for renewal for a five-year term. And you conducted a public hearing at the meeting on March 27th to consider the level of support for the renewal petition by teachers and other employees of the district and parents and guardians. Um, as part of the process, uh, district staff along with legal counsel, uh, reviewed the re- renewal petition that was submitted um, and identified some items that needed some clarification. Uh, those that were made, uh, came back and, uh, the revised charter petition is what's before you tonight for approval. Um, Washington Middle Charter High School, uh, College High School has been designated by the C- CDE as a middle performing charter school. Middle performing charter school renewals cannot be denied based on academic performance unless the authorizer makes findings. Essentially that the charter has failed to meet or make sufficient progress toward meeting standards that provide a benefit to the peoples of the school and that closure of the charter school is in the best interest of students. Staff and legal have read that and there, there are no, you don't have any facts to support findings, uh, those type of findings. So the district staff considered the performance on a school-wide basis and amongst all subgroups supported by the charter school and identified, uh, that are identified on the dashboard and determined that charter school meets the minimum eligibility requirements for renewal as a middle performing charter school. Therefore, staff recommends that the board approve the renewal of this charter school, charter for a five-year term. Uh, as, as, as Monique mentioned, uh, principal Rachel Lane is here to share some things regarding the renewal. After hearing from her, um, this, a public hearing needs to be opened again, um, taken any public comment and then closed and then the board can move on to the actual agenda item of, of, uh, taking action on the resolution. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Schutz, did I need to formally open a public hearing right now?
Presentation.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, okay, thank you.
We got, okay. Good evening Superintendent Hildreth, Board President Kirby Gonzalez and Board Trustees. Thank you for having us here tonight and for considering our school for renewal. We appreciate your support and agree with the board's recommendation for a yes vote on our renewal. I invite all of you to come visit our school and see the great things going on with our students and our teachers. I would also like to acknowledge and thank all of the Washington Middle College High School teachers and the Sacramento City College staff for their dedication and hard work they put in every day to support our students through a dual enrollment program. It takes a village and we could not do it without this dedicated team. And we have some of them here tonight, late evening. We do work tomorrow, we're not on spring break. It, um, we have had a ton of successes the past few years from our state test scores that continue to be above the state average. Our recognition as a top 11 school in America's best schools. Our Yolo County Office of Education Excellence in Education for our program. Our six-year WASC accreditation, our top 10 in the region for UC admissions, 100% graduation rate each year and 100% A through G eligibility rate each year. We are also proud of the hard work and dedication of our students who graduate and continue their college path with the soft skills and education required to be successful at their CSU or UC of our choice, of their choice. We look forward to the next five years of continued success and growth. Tonight, we have a few public comments to share some insight about what it means to be a Washington Middle College student in a dual enrollment program. You'll hear from Anna Maxwell, a junior at Washington Middle College. Parent Alex Maxwell, father of an 11th grader. Um, you'll also hear from our amazing science teacher and green team advisor, David Mark. And then moral support from Mrs. Patty Zerulgin and Lindsay Sawyer. You wanna go first? She got a lot of work.
Oh, there we go. Hello and good evening. I went, I want to begin by thanking both the superintendent and board for approving the charter renewal. WM- WMCHS was dear to me when I began my high school journey and it is dear to me now as I finished my junior year. Although I've always done well in school, it wasn't until WM- WMCHS, I'm sorry, I'm, that I began considering going to college. As a first-generation college student, it wasn't until my school that I thought I could even pursue a higher education. A lot of my peers are similar to me in that way. Many of us are first-generation college students and many of us would have struggled with higher education if we decided to go to college at all. But through WMCHS, college feels and is achievable. It's through my school that I can confidently say I feel like the best possible version of myself and I share that sentiment with my peers. All of us truly appreciate and take advantage of the opportunity that you have given us. It is why we're able to succeed the way we do. It's why our alumni are able to succeed at top 10 public universities like UC Davis. And it's why our students are always pushing themselves to be Washington Unified's portrait of a graduate. So again, thank you for renewing the school that made me, me. And thank you for renewing the same school that will continue to guide students who need institutions like this for years to come.
Hi, good evening. I'm Anna's father, Alex. And, um, I want to say thank you personally for allowing this school to exist. Uh, to me from my observation, um, this is like a, uh, private school template that's available in a public school, you know, format. So, um, I've spoken to a lot of the teachers every back-to-school night for a couple of years now. The classrooms are, you know, good size. There's no reason for any student to fall behind. Their teachers are always there to help and assist. And the sizes are not out of control like other public schools like where I came from. Just very impressed with everybody, how my daughter's succeeding to levels that I didn't know would be done. So thank you for giving my daughter the chance that, um, I never had.
Hello everyone, I'm David Marks. I'm a science teacher and avid teacher at Washington Middle College High School. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of our teaching staff. We are seven, uh, we are small but mighty. Uh, and our teaching staff really just, our retention gives so much in just in that. Um, Patty and Barb have been there for seven years, I've been there for six. Lindsay and Mark have been there for five. And we have two others that have come in since we've grown. We just don't lose teachers. Um, it's a place once you land, you know you're in a special place and you never want to leave. Uh, there's a lot of reasons for that, but I'm gonna really focus on a couple of them. Uh, one is it's just a place of amazing learning. It's a community we've created that is focused solely on learning. Um, as many of you have, have seen as you've come by to, to visit our school, we, we are a standards-based grading system. And we took that on at least four or five years ago when we focused on equity grading. And what that means is our students aren't grubbing for points, they're not, you know, we're not trying to trick them. Uh, we show them clearly what they need to know. And then they're giving, given so many opportunities to show us what they know and to re-show us what they know and to keep on, keep at it until they get it right. Um, it's pretty incredible to see that. Um, so students are learning the standards and if they don't get it the first time, it's okay. We give them more time and that's the type of environment we have. So our students are incredibly hardworking and they know they're there for learning. And that's just a great environment in which to be. Um, besides that, it's just such a supportive place to be for both students and for staff. Uh, students, we provide so many opportunities. We have office hours built into our school schedule. So during the school day, our students can come to us and get one-on-one help or small group help. Um, besides that, our principal has been able to get us a grant that allows us to have tutoring. Anna is one of our tutors. Uh, we all tutor after school or before school. Um, and that's just an amazing opportunity to work one-on-one with students. We have tutoring through Sac City College. Uh, so there's a lot of academic support for our students since they are taking on high-level high school classes plus their community college work. Uh, so students like Anna, who are first generation, can succeed and be successful the first time instead of falling on their face the first time. They can go into college and do it right from the beginning at 14 and 15 years old. Um, besides the academic support, we have incredible just mental health support and just for both teachers and students. But specifically for, for students, we have an incredible counselor, hopefully you've met Ms. Claudia before. She has a huge heart and just an academic-minded persona. Uh, she supports our students daily through that. We have a youth outreach specialist who's there for our attendance and for students who have a lot of mental health issues and they're, she's kind of their crutch and she's really supportive. Uh, we have incredible hall monitor who's just not only a, a strong backbone, but she knows our kids, Ms. Kathleen, they love her. Um, and then in our front office, I mean, we, we have Ms. Eileen from the district office, sorry. She's the, she's the most amazing, efficient, kind, uh, incredible front office worker who supports us every day. And then we've all had the pleasure of working for two incredible principals. Sean O'Neal, who started the school and then he left to this wonderful woman, Ms. Lane. Um, she has made it a place where we all feel supported as teachers. We know that she's never going to just be that automatic no person. She's gonna listen to us and she is going to usually go with what's best for the students, which is what we advocate for. Um, I've been teaching for 25 years, I've never been at a school like this where anything I need, that's not my concern. She makes a way for it to happen. Um, so I can just teach and I can just... Um, so I can just teach and I can just focus on how students can learn and be supported mentally and emotionally. So it's just an amazing place to, to teach. Um, I know we are all staying and we love it. And we have amazing people like this young woman and there's 180 of them that are equally amazing. Well, maybe not equally, but they're pretty great. Um, and so it's just a place we love. And so as teachers, I think. It's a great place to be and we, we love it. So thank you very much for considering our charter.
All right. Thank you. So I will officially open our public hearing and are there any comments with our public hearing? Okay, then I'm going to officially close our public hearing and that can take us to the adoption of resolution. Um, number 2425-40 approving the petition for the renewal of Charter for Washington Middle College. Do I have any comments or emotion?
I have a comment.
Okay.
My comment before I move. I am so excited because my daughter on her own, I didn't push her, didn't ask her. She decided to apply and she got in and the look on her face when she got that acceptance. I am excited for her. My, you guys just don't know. My baby girl, she was the quiet as a mouse. She would always whisper. She wouldn't say anything. Whenever she wanted anything, it would always be my very mousy. The fact that she's taking the steps to go into a direction that she felt was what she needed because she wants to be in nursing and she knows she's going to have a lot of schooling. So she's like, if I can get two of my college years done now, then I will be done later. So I'm thanking you for having that opportunity and showcasing it to the schools at Riverbank because that's where she fell in love with it. It was like, that's where I'm going. And I didn't even know until I got the acceptance. What is this? And she's like, oh, I applied. So anyway, just thanking you so very much for doing that for our kids and showing them that there are opportunities. So, and on that I move.
Okay, I know Trustee Wong. Do you hear? Nobody can hear you. Hold on, hold on. No, it's not okay. Hold on, I got it. You're never okay with people not hearing you.
I, I am literally okay.
There we go. There you go.
Just power to the work and I just wanted to second. That's it.
All right. Yes. And I think being here from the very beginning when this, um, was a, um, independent charter school and the district took a big risk and took it on and then seeing where it is now and just the beauty of being on that campus and you would just feel it. And I'm really grateful to, um, have spent quite a bit of time there and see you all in action and. Um, all right. So we have a, a motion to approve. We have a second. Uh, we're going to do a roll call vote and then it, I, we all have to stand up anyways. So I, we've been sitting too long. I think you all are going to need a standing ovation when we're done with this. Okay. So we have a motion to approve, a seconded, um, and let's do our roll call vote. Um, Trustee Wong. Clerk Castro.
Aye.
Vice President Coffey.
Aye.
Trustee Hunt.
Aye.
An aye to vote aye. Thank you. Yeah, let's do it. Five years? Yeah, let's do it. Okay, we're moving up in our items again. So right now we are going to be at item six. And I do want to apologize. We know that this is too late for anybody to have to be here and it's not accessible and hard when it's this late. So, um, we're working on our processes and apologies. Okay. So, um, Trustee Wong's made a motion that will move past 10. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, um, Trustee Hunt. We have to do a roll call vote. Uh, Vice President Coffey.
Yes, aye.
Clerk Castro.
Aye.
Trustee Hunt.
Aye.
Trustee Wong. Aye to vote aye. So that takes us to the adoption of resolution number 2425-41 authorizing the closure of Washington Unified Virtual Academy. Monique Sobal, our Chief Business Officer.
Thank you. As with our last conversation at our last board meeting, I'm also joined by Assistant Superintendent Streep. She will provide the, the heart of the presentation, but we're both here to answer your questions.
Next slide please, Mario. Um, keep going. Okay. So we wanted to, um, provide you with some of the responses to your questions when we were here last, um, as an information item. Um, and then give you an opportunity to ask us additional questions. Um, any, you know, gather any more information you may need to make a decision. So next slide please. Um, so I'm going to go kind of fast because this information is all from the last presentation. So current enrollment is 62 students. Um, with a average daily attendance of about 89%. Um, the current staffing includes three, three teachers, one principal and two classified staff. Um, a secretary too, as well as a par educator. Um, and this year's estimated general fund contribution is $130,000. For next year, if we were to remain status quo, would be $170,000. Next slide. And so, um, this is the real heart of what you asked us to, um, research a little bit. And so what you have in front of you are three options based on your questions. Um, we, um, looked at how could we keep all of the kids that are currently at WOVA? Um, of course minus our eighth graders who would, who are matriculating into ninth grade. Um, and, and, and not sacrifice the instructional program. And so in option one, um, you have for staffing, two teachers. Um, in terms of who would supervise the school, there's two options there. It could be, um, maybe paying a stipend to, um, an existing K-8 principal or, um, it would be under the supervision of educational services staff. The instructional model would be very similar to what we have now. Although we would, because it's only two teachers, we would, um, recommend that because the highest number of kids are at the higher grades and that's really kind of where we see, um, the need. We would limit enrollment to fourth through eighth graders. Um, and that would be 33 students per class, per teacher. And what that does is it maintains the amount of, um, synchronous minutes that kids currently, um, have. And for our seventh through eighth graders, because currently the span is sev- sixth through eighth grade, it would actually increase the amount of face-to-face time they would have with, with their teachers. And option two, the only thing, um, that's different is that you take out the possibility of the school being supervised by, um, ed services. It would be supervised by an existing, um, K-8 principal. And then in option three, this is where you see the most drastic change to the instructional pro- program as it currently exists. Um, and this was the independent study model, similar to, um, a typical independent study where kids kind of receive assignments and when they, uh, and maybe check in with the teacher once a week. Um, or more on an as-needed basis. Um, and in this model, the plus is that you get to keep all of the current students. Um, but again, that you significantly decrease the amount of time they have with, um, with the teacher face-to-face because you're serving more grade levels, um, in this model. Um, and I believe in, in this model, we could have the supervisor of the school be either a K-8 principal or ed services. So are there any questions about these three possibilities?
Um, I assume this is the bulk of our conversation. So do you have more with your presentation or do you want to end here and we'll do public?
This is pretty much it. And then I think something worth noting is that in all three of these models, there wouldn't be, um, any contribution from the general fund to sustain the school.
Thank you.
For the, the instructional program.
Then I will call for a public comment.
We have one public comment from Doug Villasnip.
This is just more, uh, requests for clarification. Um, I see that on all of these, the new not, uh, model will not require district contribution. My question is, is there grant funding for this? Because I'm wondering about the impact of there, there are two, um, FTE employees at this school and if they go to fill in a vacancy in the district, those are two people that we would not need to rehire. And so I'm wondering if that cost is being taken into consideration or that reduction in cost? Does that make sense?
As though they leave and we hired six months of people?
No, what I'm saying is they're currently employees of the district. So if this program collapses when we do our rehiring, I think we have thirty, 33 vacancies already currently. Then they would take two of those vacancies that we wouldn't need. Yeah, it would go down to 31, right? Current employees. That, that's what I'm saying. I'm just wondering about the, because it says there's, there's no cost to this program. Okay, that's what I was wondering. What's sustain the program? Okay. So the ADA covers it. All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, then I'll open it up to my colleagues on the board. Trustee Wong. Do you have some comment? Okay.
Just a question. Um, wondering what a staff recommendation, given that on the financial impact, it's all equal?
So my recommendation from, um, a teaching and learning perspective is either option one or option two. Because even though you're serving, you won't be able to serve first through third graders. We know that this model particularly serves fourth through eighth. And in either of those models, the kids would receive similar instruction to what they have now.
Actually, I probably should have started with thank you, um, so much for actually looking and exploring these options from that time. Um, even though I'm not up on, on the dais, I'm watching you guys live streams. So I see you, Andres. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I am good with staff recommendation one or two. Um, it is late, so I, I don't very understand the nuances and the differences in supervision at this moment. So, um, that is just the outstanding question. Happy to, um, defer to others on the board if they have some.
Others?
Do we have about how many kids we currently serve in the first through third grade? Or kinder through?
Amanda? Third. I believe it's twelve. Sixteen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is, does that include rising fourth graders? So nine, nine students would not continue in mod- in option one or option two. And, um, another question you all asked us to explore was what supports would be in place if WOVA didn't exist. And so that's on the next slide. Um, and I know Principal Diibelbiss touched on this a little bit last time, but we promised families that we would let them know as soon as possible what the board's decision is. So that would be an immediate next step. Um, making sure that we're securing spots, um, at their home schools and then supporting families through an inter or intra-district permit process, if that's what they chose. Um, and then also coordinating opportunities for students to, um, visit their new WS or their resident WUSB school before the start of school. Um, and then just providing any additional support that may come up on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate all of these options. I am not in favor of, of not having WOVA and having no option. So that could, um, obviously if we need to, um, adjust things and there are students that will not have a space just because of the age group. Um, and I know you're doing magical things with elementary students in WOVA. I know you are. And so it's probably, I know this is painful. Um, so, um, I, I think though, as we look at this, um, what I hear from our students is, um, having their littlest ones, and maybe I can ask stuff too, is, is keeping the model as similar as possible versus having our students in a, in a much more synchronous, um, space. So, um, in terms of retaining our students, do we believe that we'll better retain our students by having them in option, say, one versus option three would be my question?
Option one versus?
Mm-hmm. Where it becomes suddenly more synchronous.
There's kind of a couple of things to consider. Um, the six-eight class, if we were to keep, uh, so option three, the six-eight class is already full. There's actually 34 students just based on the kids that are currently here. And since two weeks ago, I have another kid on the waitlist. So I have five kids on the waitlist. So to meet the needs of what we see in seventh and eighth grade, I think having the seventh and eighth grade as its own entity, that's where we see the most transfers. Last year it was full. This year it's full at six-eight and we have a waitlist starting a couple of months ago, you know? Um, so the one-five-six-eight, six-eight part is the part I'm concerned about. It, it would just be full. It would be full from the day one of the school year. Um, I don't know if we would continue to have as many students if it's asynchronous because what draws our families in is we explain that we're live, you know, for over half of the day with our classes. Um, so I, I don't, I don't know, but I also feel for those nine students that if we were to not have it, but they might not choose us anyway if all of a sudden they're only meeting with their teacher a half hour a day because currently, both of my teachers are here too, by the way. So Terry Sykes and Sandra Lorenzo. So right now, you know, Terry's able to teach them the majority of the day. So I don't know what would happen to those students if, if all of a sudden it was more like a half hour, you know, we haven't asked them. Yeah.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the board?
I think I, I came in, sorry, I came, I went, came back. So, um, I don't want to do too much, but I, I think part of me was, I think I got a little confused when I came in and I saw options when I thought it was a closure. And so now I'm, I came in late. So I don't want to redo it. So I'm going to leave the comments to them.
Um, this is confusing because the way that the item reads, it, it reads as a, it reads, it leads with a closure. Um, but we had asked last meeting that there were options that were brought back to us. And I appreciate that all the options do, you know, are self-sufficient. And so, um, given the information that you've said, I would lean towards, um, option one. Um, and I do recognize how painful that is and, um, and how hard that will be for, for some of our students. But I think given, um, the majority of time with students and the data on where they are, I think that that makes the most sense and it gives the most flexibility for ed services or for what this space is. Um, do any others have any comments then as we move to that? Cause we have to give some direction. Because we have to give some direction.
Well, hopefully be. My wondering, I just. Is this going to be embedded in an existing school? Don't need to vote. Close Wova as a C D S code, and this will be adopted at a new school? Help me understand.
I don't know if you can see it, Trispy Wong, on the presentation, but option two is that it does merge. We close it and then it merges with existing school site. Option one, has it remain open? It has the same flexibility it could be at a school site, or it could be under Ed Services.
I didn't catch the presentation. But again, it's late. Apologies that I'm looking at the presentation and I didn't get that distinction. But okay. Yeah.
Okay, okay. Well, then we need to make a motion, but it's, this is a tricky motion because we're not. So I guess we would make the motion to reject the resolution. Well, we just gave you a direction for item one and then, yeah, and then we would. Okay. Yes.
We can't hear her.
I, yes, hold on, Trispy Wong. Okay, so yes, our debate was if we could just pull it and not vote on it versus voting no. Did you have any feedback on that?
No, I don't, I don't think, yeah, I don't know if there's a, there's nothing to vote on if someone's making the move.
Yeah. All right, then we're going to move on from there. We're going to, because we have no motion to approve the resolution of closure. And then our direction is that it remains open. I'm sorry, that wasn't on right now. That takes us to ten, which is our approval to increase. And we did not, we did not have a motion for.
Just for the record, sorry, I wrote down that the motion was made to reject the resolution authorizing the closure of Wova and the board.
No one made that resolution.
Oh, no one made the motion. So just.
There was no motion.
I just, no motion.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you. So with no motion, it remains open and our direction was option one.
Thank you.
I know. Next time we need to work on, I think, how we word that. Okay, so that takes us now to the approval. This was initially item ten, approval to increase the Elkhorn Village Modernization Project Program Budget. Monique Sival, our Chief Business Officer.
Thank you very much. We are excited to be with you today to provide an update on our Elkhorn Village Modernization Project. I'm joined by our Facilities Director, Dan Banowitz. He'll provide the heart of the of the presentation and we'll both be here to answer your.
Good evening, Board. I'd like to present and kind of go through a little bit of background and where we're going. So the purpose is to review the the modernization project and request the approval to increase the budget. It aligns with all its plans. So the project started back in December of twenty twenty one. The board approved a budget for the the overall budget for the project at fifty nine million, three hundred nineteen thousand dollars. After many meetings with consulting our facility master plan, meetings with the site, the community, the staff, and also districts within the district with, you know, other departments within the district, we had initial design. And that initial design is basically everything, right? The whole wish list, everything. So we put everything in there. We had the estimate done and that initial design came in over twenty million dollars over budget. Okay, so our next step from there is how can we get this back in line with our budget? So over those last few months, we have done a lot of work on trying to figure that out. And we've made some changes. Back in September, the board approved the use of TimberQuest for the new classroom building. Instead of traditionally stick built, that saved millions of dollars. We reduced the number of new buildings. And we've also used a lot of other methods and materials changes to get us closer in line. At this point, the design revisions are at four million dollars over budget. So you can see the initial design, all the dark gray are all the new buildings on the north. It also includes the administration office expansion and expanding the kitchen as well. This was the plan that was twenty million over budget. This revised changes those buildings to the TimberQuest. And it also incorporates feedback from the bond, I mean, the board Facility Subcommittee, the site admin, and the community of Elkhorn Village. So our recommendation is to increase the budget by four million dollars, changing the overall budget from fifty nine million, three hundred nineteen thousand to sixty three million, three hundred nineteen thousand. To fund this, we have over four point nine million dollars in interest earned from the bond in that fund. So we would transfer four million dollars from that fund into the project budget. And one thing I want to point out, too, is this increase would not change at all the Performing Arts Center budget. It doesn't have an impact on that project whatsoever.
Okay, thank you. Are there any public comments?
No public comments.
What? You gave all your evening.
I'm allowed to say this, too. It's late, I'm tired.
I know. I'm just teasing, but we knew you were here, so we moved it up.
Sorry, I had P ten still. Doctor Emily, Emily Curzer.
Okay, I messed this up the last time. I'm gonna, I'm determined this time. Hello, School Board Trustees. I am a parent living in District Two. And back in February, I gave a public comment asking for more communication between the School Board and parents regarding the Elkhorn Village Modernization product, project. We, as parents, were again particularly concerned about the partial conversion of the M U R, our multipurpose room, into classrooms, given Elkhorn's old and undersized cafeteria. We were also slightly concerned because there wasn't really enough classroom space even before the budget got cut even more. And so we were really going to be low on space in general at the school. And today, I would like to say a really big, big, big thank you to the School Board for listening, particularly Trusty Wong and Vice President Coffey, who serve on the Facilities Subcommittee. So attending the Subcommittee meetings, I felt really reassured and validated that the School Board members heard our concerns, cared about our students, and were trying their very best to find a compromise within the constraints of the available funding. I would also really like to thank Dan and Monique for visiting Elkhorn and responding to the parent questions and concerns that we had, as well as for all of the work that they've done on Elkhorn's modernization. We realized that high inflation forced major alterations and reductions to the original plan for the project. So I really commend their creativity and that they were able to make it all work somehow. Because I don't, sometimes I don't know how they did it. And we're not going to be like living in a shack because that that was a really big amount of money that they had to somehow cut from the budget. And then finally, as a previous theater slash choir slash band kid and a strong supporter of the Performing Arts Center, I also applaud that the solution being brought to the board tonight to complete one of the originally planned buildings, that building F back on that picture, won't take away the funds for the Performing Arts Center's construction. I sincerely hope that you will consider approving the additional budget for the Elkhorn Village Modernization night. Thank you.
Our next comment is Betsy Chialino.
Do you all get to take snacks or anything ever when you're meeting from this log? Because I'm really impressed. So good evening, President Kirby Gonzalez, Trustees, Dr. Hildreth. I'm Betsy Chialino. I'm the parent of a kindergarten student at Elkhorn Elementary. My family and I live in Broderick. We love the school. We love being able to walk to school. We love our teachers. So I also would have put a plug in while I'm here that I really hope you can find the money also to pay our teachers really well because they're wonderful and amazing. I also was here nearly two months ago, sharing a statement about the need to include parent and teacher input before finalizing the Elkhorn Modernization Plan and also any future campus renovations. And I'm also back here tonight to say thank you. Thank you for listening to me and other Elkhorn parents, both at this forum, at the Facility Subcommittee, at Coffee with the Principal. As you consider approving this additional four million for the project in order to preserve the multi-use room and add these three classrooms, I just also want you to know that your willingness to listen and consider those alternatives are recognized and appreciated. I'm going to risk sounding a little dramatic right now in saying this, but witnessing this whole process work as it's designed to work, elected officials, hearing public feedback through the appropriate channels, listening to the feedback, taking it seriously, and then taking action, watching that play out here, that's been like so deeply encouraging to me, hopefully to others at a time when other levels of our democracy are failing very hard. So I wanted to point that out and say thank you for taking us seriously. And thank you for taking your roles as elected officials seriously as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then I'm going to open it up to our board comments. And I think first to our two who are on the Facility Committee, Vice President Coffey.
Or does Jackie, are you ready? Jackie, you ready to go?
Yeah, I'm ready to go.
Go.
The voice from, the voice from beyond. Just really just a thank you to our staff who really were flexible. As Vice President Coffey and I were kind of working through the Facility Subcommittee and what kept coming back was, we're not going to get a bond this large for a very long time. It's a, you know, I really just wanted to do it right. And thank you to the public for raising the opportunity to have a real discussion, right? Because we didn't get everything we all wanted, but it really is, democracy is about compromise. And so thank you so much for the kind words. Thank you for working with the community, staff, Dan and Monique and others. Thank you, Virginia, for being my partner in prime on the Facilities Subcommittee and just really just supportive of this. And it was a really good and rich discussion. And I've learned a lot about how our schools were built in the nineteen fifties, which is a little bit scary. And I'm hopeful about the opportunity to, I'm actually really excited about finally really bringing back to life our historical schools that are part of Washington University. So I will move whenever the time is right.
Monique, Dan, I can't thank you guys enough for putting yourselves out there and for doing the work that needed to be done. We heard the plea of our parents and you guys stepped up to the plate. And I'm going to call it a walk in homerun only because I don't think it went over the fence because we didn't get everything we wanted, but we still nailed it. So thank you. And that's all I got to say. I'm second.
All right, are there any questions?
Yeah, just really quick. What is our current balance in the of interest? So we're requesting to approve four million of that with what's available?
We have four point nine million in interest earned.
How does that rebuild if we use the majority of it?
It rebuilds just like it did before. So every month we get a little bit, just like a regular bank account.
Okay.
When we began a project, we don't begin a project with the budget to use interest. That is there and it's useful in these types of situations. But looking at the next projects, we're not saying we're going in to use that interest. So that that's really helpful in these situations.
How long did it take us to earn the five million? Has it been since we, is this all the interest we've earned over?
To my knowledge, it is all the interest. So we had, the way that it's, I'll take a little step back. I want to say in spring twenty twenty one is when we sold what we call the first issuance of a bond. So the first major amount, that might have been about fifty thousand dollars. I don't quote me, I'll take it from you. It's late. But and so we have that in the bank. And of course, we're spending it. We spent it on Westfield. And so we're depleting that bond or that that money in the bank. And so we are gaining a little bit of interest. And then last spring, we issued, I think, another forty million dollars ish. And so then more money went in the bank. So that just keeps accumulating the interest. So the answer is yes, that's since spring of twenty twenty one, recognizing that the balance goes up.
Thank you.
No, just more comments. I am thankful for you guys and how you pivoted. And I know you guys were working with a limited space. That school is so old and that site is so small. So what you had to do to change, to reconfigure the design and adding or upgrading the classrooms, it's for me a no brainer. I don't want to take any shortcuts. This is the old, one of the oldest schools in Broderick. So I, my uncles, my dad, I went there, my kid goes there now. So it's a no brainer for me. I was ready to fight and advocate for it. And it was going to move forward regardless. I had a lot of people in my family reach out and I, they're, I mean, it was like a big no brainer for everybody else, too. So I was, I'm just happy to see it move forward.
And I know it's, it's a lot of work to pack up a classroom, a school, offices, and all the things that, all the work that is about to happen. And I'm really glad that people are going to be doing that work, knowing that they're coming to something that they're feeling good about. Because when I had visited in the fall, that was the worry. How am I going to get people to pack up this place when we're all mad about? You know, and so I think this this work that you've done is, this feels, this feels good because we want people to feel, it's a big sacrifice to move your whole school for a year. And so we really want to have a great product. So thank you. We had a motion by Trusty Wong. We had him seconded by Vice President Coffey. Let's do a roll call vote. Trusty Wong. Kirk Castro.
Aye.
Vice President Coffey.
Aye.
Trusty Hunt.
Aye.
I too vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I could take just a moment to also thank the behind the scenes person or people who are also part of our Facilities Department, Daniel Lindar, and then Yvette Hernandez Lopez, they are part of this as well.
Thank you.
Yes, they are. We haven't forgotten.
Thank you for being here so late.
Okay, yes, thank you. Now we're going back up to the beginning of the order. I know some of you waited for that, too. So now we're going to action. Item one, approval, which was initially one, approval of out of state conference for Unbound Ed Standards Institute for June twenty third to twenty sixth, twenty twenty five. And that's Autry Streak Assistant Superintendent of Education Services.
Okay, good evening again. I'm standing before you tonight in alignment with our strategic plan goals, in alignment with our L cap goals, as well as our teaching and learning plan, requesting approval to send up to twenty teachers to a standards institute opportunity, which happens this summer in Denver. We've sent about sixty teachers so far out of over four hundred teachers that we have here in our, in our district. We selected the number twenty based on some preliminary interests that we, you know. We selected the number 20 based on some preliminary interests that we, you know, gathered. The highest interest coming from our River City High School and from Westmore Oaks, which is our only CSI school, which means comprehensive, comprehensive support. Stephanie, help me out. CSI, comprehensive support and intervention? Okay, just late. Just letting you know that that's one of our lowest performing schools academically. And they also have not had the opportunity to send, I think we've had one teacher from that school attend in the past. And they have six teachers interested in going. We've heard from our teachers even tonight that there's a need for teachers to be trained in identifying implicit bias and how that shows up in daily instruction. We've heard it from teachers before here at the podium during public comment. We've also heard from students, some of their experiences at the high school in terms of treatment. And the Standards Institute is an opportunity that addresses mindsets. And then it equips teachers with concrete skills and strategies to employ in their classrooms to elevate the rigor that kids are experiencing in their academics. I could go on and on, but again, it's late. And so that's what the ask is tonight in alignment with our goal to improve high-quality first instruction. We're asking for the board's approval to use LCAP funds to send 20 teachers to the Summer Standards Institute this summer.
Okay. Are there any public comments?
No public comment.
Okay. Are there any board comments?
I have a few.
Okay.
So I want to, you know, we've heard the comments of not wanting to have out-of-state conferences being approved. And because, you know, we're trying to save money, I wanted to ask, this monies that we currently have, it was already pre-budgeted. In my, my understanding, it was already pre-budgeted. So this is something that they was already forthcoming from the LCAP?
Yes.
So coming this next year, that's when if we choose to not do out-of-state conferences, is when we would take those initiatives? But for this one, like we've already kind of budgeted this amount?
We've budgeted in our LCAP plan that the board approved in June, just an allocation of funds that would be used for professional learning, yes.
Okay. So my, my next question is, if we decided to not use that money or to not approve this, would those funds go, be able to roll over into the next year or the next, you know, or does it have to be used for this year for this time? Or not this particular thing, but like, you know what? I don't know if I'm making sense.
Yes. So the, the plan that was approved were for actions that we agreed to take for this school year. If there are funds that are not expended, then we would still use them for next year, but for the same purposes that we outlined in this year's LCAP.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was my main question.
Okay.
Can I get the feedback from the, because we still have three board members, right, that approved this last June? Or is there feedback, like what, what did we take back from the last conference? Like, what is the purpose? I mean, I know you shared a little bit, but it's a very steep cost for me.
So the registration cost is equitable to other conferences, even in-state conferences. It's $2,100, $2,100 per participant. Last time when we came to the board for approval to take teachers last summer, we brought some of the first cohort of teachers with us so that they could give you a little bit about what they learned and how they've used it in their classrooms. So what, what people learn is how to improve their daily practice as, as a teacher. It's not a conference where you get a menu of workshops and you decide which one you want to go to and when. You choose and commit to a pathway, and you're in the same class with the same instructor and the same cohort of educators for four days from about eight to four in the morning. And then there's a four to five hour where anybody who's on your team, you get together and you debrief and you action plan based on the day's learning. So it's, it's an intensive learning experience that all of the teachers that we've taken have, I haven't heard of any feedback where they didn't feel like it was a valuable experience and it did not impact their instruction.
And then the, you said 2,100, but it's, if I like do the quick math, it's like 5,000. So it's 2,100 just for to register this?
And we usually overestimate just so, so that we make sure we're staying within what the board approved. So it's up to 5,000, and the balance would be for lodging and travel.
I might have something else, but I'm like. For the new trustees, last year, the board approved to send a trustee who is on the Curriculum Council to this conference. So then we would have some perspective to bring back because it has been a really big investment. Full disclosure, that was me, and I had the flu and was in bed for three days. It was very sad. I thought for sure I could like will myself to get on that plane, but I, I was really, really, really sick. And so I had to, so I wasn't able to, to go and speak to it, but we did have quite a few staff members speak to it. My question may, so it looks like we have about 15% of employees, 60 out of 400. You have a targeted group that's going next. It has been budgeted already in our LCAP. And so what, what do you anticipate this to look like for next year? Do you anticipate the idea that you would like to, with this LCAP money, continue to send people? Or that we're working to build capacity to then have these people come back? What does that look like in terms of the long-term piece with this?
So to support what we're trying to accomplish through the Teaching and Learning Plan, our vision and goal is to send a cohort of teachers every year as long as budget supports that. We also have a group of teachers who are going to a Stockton option. But dates, those particular dates don't work for everyone. And so in terms of having people who have participated in it bring it back, it's, it's really designed to, yes, share what you learned with your colleagues. But the, the training is not, you're not being trained to be a trainer. You're being trained to be a practitioner. And so we can definitely look at ways to maybe partner with them to build our own capacity in the future. I'm, I'm open to that possibility.
I would just add that for the Standards Institute sponsored by Unbound Ed, it is a national training. And so they have, I think, two per summer. Usually the, the four-day is always during the summer because they know districts to send teachers for four days during the school year would not be the best for students. So they do one every year somewhere on the West Coast. And then they do some, do another training during the summer, usually in July for the East Coast. So just thinking about our training, we're always seeking in-state first. So in-state is always going to be the first criteria when we're, employees are wanting to go to professional learning opportunities. But we know there's also the restriction when there are things that are nationally sponsored and we don't have any control of the locations.
I'm just texting my mom, so I'm.
Have we asked if it, if it's ever, I mean, would it be possible to see if there would be an instructor from Unbound Ed who could come to our school site and provide, you know, instead of sending them, sending 20 there at this cost, having one come during the summer for the four days? And it might just be as, but you'll reach more versus a small, like a small cohort?
Yes. And we've costed that out as well. And they do have that as an option. And we can definitely look to do that for next summer. The, the difference is that teachers are only learning from the instructor and the other teachers in the room who are from the same local context. As opposed to at the national conferences, you're learning from and working with districts from all over.
So like if my specialty was mathematics, then I'll be in the cohort of mathematics versus specialty science or English. So, I mean, I kind of, I understand that. I'm just trying to.
Cut out the travel costs.
Yeah, I'm trying to find a way.
Do we not have professional development that, that is focused on this already?
So we, we don't do our own exact kind of training, but we, this, the training that we've received from them informs how we do our own in-house professional learning. GLAM is the framework that we learn from Unbound Ed, and that's an acronym. GL means grade level. So that's where you're making sure that any tasks, any texts, any materials you're putting in front of kids is at the appropriate grade level, making sure that you're not giving kids things that are not challenging them. E is engaging. Is the instruction engaging? Is it affirming? Does it affirm who they are? Their background, their, their native language. And then M is, is it meaningful? Is it giving them an opportunity to think critically? To, it's really about rigor. It's about, are we stretching our kids? Are we growing them academically? While making sure that we aren't unintentionally approaching our instruction with our own implicit biases that may cause us to have lowered expectations for certain kids or be putting things in front of them that are too easy, and so they never kind of stretch. So it's, it's an intensive four days where you first work on mindsets. And then from that, you move into methods and practices to improve your instruction.
Since this has been set in the LCAP and budgeted for this year, and we have teachers soon, my, I think we're hearing a lot of feedback moving forward to take into account as we think about the budgets moving forward. But unless there's any additional dialogue, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
And then we'll do a roll call vote. So, Trustee Wong.
Aye.
Clerk Castro.
No.
Okay. Vice President Coffee.
As much as I want to, I've been willing, willing this over, and I'm going to have to say for this time, no.
Trustee Hunt.
Aye.
And I too vote aye. Thank you. Okay, that now takes us to item number two, the approval of the 2025 Middle College National Consortium Summer Institute Conference in Jersey City, New Jersey, and that's June 28th to June 30th, 2025. Autry Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Forgot that it was me.
I know, and it's been moved around.
So I'm back before you now for a similar request, but this time for two employees from Washington Middle College. This is something that they participate in annually. It's a professional learning experience designed specifically for middle colleges. So the emphasis is on dual enrollment, how to support student needs in the middle college model. And the fiscal impact is $5,000 for two employees, and that's the principal and one teacher. And the dates are, I believe it's in the summer, June 28th to June 30th in Jersey City, New Jersey.
Okay. Are there any public comments?
No public comment.
Okay. Are there any board comments?
I'm sorry, I didn't say this is also coming from the school's LCAP funds.
Thank you. There's no comment? Okay. Well, then can I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Okay, moved by Trustee Hunt. I will second. Okay. And Trustee Wong has seconded. And Trustee Wong. Clerk Castro.
Aye.
I too vote aye. Vice President Coffee.
Aye.
Trustee Hunt.
Aye.
That, stay there. That takes us to the approval of R and D Educational Services Addendum for the Expanded Learning Program Summer Camp. Again, Autry Street, our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. And welcome back. Thank you both for starting us off.
So we are standing before you so that we can, requesting the approval to amend an existing contract with one of our enrichment vendors, so that they may provide Spanish classes to our students who will participate in this summer's ELOP programming. We already have an existing contract, and this amendment would put it beyond the $100,000, which is why we're, why it's an acting item.
Yes. So typically, these would, are often usually unconscion. So are there any public comments?
No public comment.
Okay. Are there any board comments or questions? No? Okay. Then can I get a motion?
I'll move.
You rock. You want to rock, paper, scissors?
I win.
If she moves, then I'm second.
Okay, it is moved by Vice President Coffee, seconded by Clerk Castro. Clerk Castro. Oh, yeah, yeah, aye. Trustee Wong. I too vote aye. Vice President Coffee.
Aye.
Trustee Hunt.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now that takes us to what was originally item seven, the approval of a contract with Network Management Corporation. Wait, what? What's happening?
It's the calendar.
The calendar, you're on the wrong thing.
Wait, oh, where's it?
Number four, originally four.
Oh, you're right. Sorry. It's cut off of my, everybody, it's cut off of mine right here. So, yes.
I knew I was off.
It's cut off the way it printed. Okay, item four is the calendar. Can you read for me what it, the title, since it's been cut off for mine on here?
It says, "Approval of the 2026, 2027 Instructional Calendar." Jay Borges, Assistant Superintendent.
Okay, thank you. Apologies.
No worries. It is 10:45. We're all there, right? Good evening, Board. I am here to seek approval of the 2627 instructional calendar. I'm going to go through a quick, I'm going to go through a quick presentation. So Mario, we're going to flip through this quickly. We're going to do a quick historical context, talk about some of the requirements, look at some of the data that was from community results, survey and staff results. I can't even talk anymore from 2024, and then seek approval. So we, maybe we skipped a slide, but this is okay. We're moving along. So one of the things that started our instructional calendar that we needed to be mindful of was PE minutes, especially because our high school is on a block schedule. So because of the minutes in the block schedule, we need to have 87 days of instruction. Thank you. Yeah, you're with me. Next slide. I practiced this earlier. I was fluid.
I bet.
So if you look at 27, 28, 19, we did not meet instructional minutes. 28, 19, we did not meet instructional minutes. 19, 20, not again. 21, 22, nope. 23, 22, 23, we did, but you could see that we started earlier in August that allowed for that timeframe. Then we jumped to 23, 24. We did meet the minutes, but you can see that our high school students had to take their finals over after winter break. So that's very challenging for our high school students. Next slide. And then for 24, 25, again, you could see that they had to take that over. I was actually around over winter break with a high school student. I'm like, what are you doing? And they're like, Auntie, I'm studying for my finals. So they got no downtime because they're studying for their finals that they have to take after winter break. Next slide. We did do a survey last year, asking for feedback regarding the fact that we were looking at 25, 26 calendar and asking for what was a better fit for our staff and community. Everybody voted for the two weeks in the spring because we had to have so many days in the fall. So we couldn't put more vacation time there. We had to put the vacation time in either at the end of the winter break or in the springtime. So it's the community about, if you go to the next slide, 719 said they would rather have, that took the survey, would rather have the two weeks in the spring than three weeks at winter. So keep going. So that led to 25. So that led to 25, 26, which meant that this is coming up and this is what the board approved in June 13th of last spring, where we're gonna meet our minutes and high school finals will fall off, uh, before winter break, allowing the kids to actually have some downtime this year before they start semester. So wanting to quickly go through the instructional calendar requirements, um, part of the CBA with WSTA is having a, um, calendar committee that's comprised of district staff, CSAA staff, and obviously WSTA staff. We have a list of individuals who have participated in that committee this, uh, spring, this semester so far. We have to keep doing it, but we have to take in consideration, there's 180 school days that are required and each grade level requires so many instructional minutes. If we don't hit those instructional minutes, we can lose funding, so that could be a penalty if we're not hitting that. We already talked about the PEA, just put it here just to emphasize that that's a big driving component of this. We have to align to state and federal holidays, so we have the list of those, so those kind of dictate a lot of the time we take off. We also have requirements as far as having pre-service days, professional learning opportunities. We have in the WSTA CBA, 47 minimum days required. There's different rules for high school versus K8, and then having 133 regular school days. So all of this is being taken in consideration. We also try to balance the semesters, so 180 days, 90 days in each semester, 45 days a quarter, so trying to keep that balance as a teacher, right? If you're trying to teach your kids and you got 60 days in one and 40 in the other, you're not gonna be able to balance it right with your instruction and the scope and sequence that you need to follow. Other considerations, we talked about the, um, high schools and their winter breaks and where the finals are falling. Um, we also have the TK, um, parent conferences, so they work on trimester, so the same thing, they break that 180 days into three trimesters, that's 60 days. So you can see, um, August to October, you have that first trimester and then you usually see parent conferences that first week in November. So that means they finish the trimester and then they're having parent conferences to talk about how the kids are doing and where they're going, so trying to align that as well. Also, as you heard President Gondara talk about the 10, 11 month employees, we're really trying to make sure we're taking care of that and obviously if this is approved, as you already heard him say, we'd be negotiating any additional impact that we need to work through. Uh, the last thing on this I did not include in this presentation and I should have, um, we also had talked about as a committee, the spring semester testing, state testing. So taking in consideration the time kids need to be prepared for that and when those testing happen, so we have the state testing, we have AP testing for our high school students, so all of that has to be considered in this as well. Go to the next one. So our recommendation. So as you can see here, very colorful, we have green, so our first day of school would start on the 5th of August, very similar to what's going for the 25, 26, so this is following the same, um, plan. Our green is our PL days, so those are not when we don't have students. Pink is our parent conferences for our TK5. Um, midterm finals is our purple. You can see that all the purples, there's a little bit of a break after the purples, which is great because it really helps stop in that, uh, quarter and then start the new one. Um, I know the high school teachers really like that, is also really good for the students as far as ending that and then starting that next quarter. And then all of our Wednesdays are minimum days to hit that requirement from the CBA of 47 minimum days. You can see our balance of days and semesters, so there's, you can see how many days in each of the quarters, the semesters, we're hitting that 87, got 88, just made it. Um, and then for the 180 total, and the last slide. So you can see we've hit our instructional minutes, our high school students are taking their finals before the semester, we're pretty balanced on our quarter semesters, we're thinking about our, all of our employees, our 11 months, I mean, we have seven.
Work calendars for CSAA?
Yeah. Um, and then our alignment for our, uh, conferences for TK through five. So with that, any questions? And I am here to seek approval.
Hey, thank you, are there any public comments?
No public comments.
Okay, then I'll open up the board.
I have nothing.
Okay. No comment? Okay. Um, okay. I think the, the calendar that is going to be in implementation next year gives a lot of challenges with that two-week, um, spring break with state testing, and so I think that in terms of state testing, this calendar will, um, I think it looks like be easier in that regard.
Yeah, and I didn't call that out because I, again, tired. Um, we did shorten up the spring break, so it's a week long and then only a couple days, which is kind of nice, it gives up a week off and a couple travel days, but gets kids back. And then you can see we did break up April a little bit. Um, we, we're in a long stretch, I mean, my partner's back here, we all feel it, uh, right now, we know everybody needs a break, so going this late into the year is really hard on the staff. This allows to get that break and then give us a little break in April as well, a little downtime as we're pushing through those final months of testing, so.
All right, well then if there's no, um, comments or questions.
I move.
I have a motion. Okay, motioned, um, by vice president Coffey.
Second.
Second by clerk Castro. Um, back to, how about trustee Hunt?
Aye.
Vice president Coffey.
Aye.
I two vote aye. Trustee Wong.
Aye.
Clerk Castro.
Aye.
Thank you, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That now takes us to what was originally item seven, approval of the contract with Network Management Corporation for the River City High School Clock Speaker Upgrade Project when Exavol Chief Business Officer.
Hello again. This item, um, is we're seeking approval with the contract with, uh, Network Management Corporation for the River City High School Clock and Bell, uh, Clock and Speaker Upgrade Project. Um, the current, um, clock and speaker system at River City High School is the original 2008 analog system that was installed when the school was built. Um, and it does not function, um, as well as it should. So we're proposing to add a digital system, so that's gonna be replacing every clock and bell, um, which is over 300 of them, and also all the cabling associated with that. Um, and some of the reasons why, um, is, you know, it's, it's part of safety communication upgrades that, um, will improve those, uh, communications at the school. Um, this is due to its cost, this was formally bid, so that means it was advertised a couple times, um, and we also had mandatory bid walk, which we had two contractors, um, come to, and then we got those two bids, um, that we opened. Um, one was with Network Management Corporation for $528,000, um, the other was Vanden Bosch Electric for $533,500. Um, so the low bidder was Network Management Corporation. Um, we were happy that they were the low bidder, we use them quite a bit, um, and they're a good company, so we're very comfortable with them. Um, so we are recommending that we approve the contract with Network Management Corporation for $628,000. So that is the, the bid, the low bid of $528,000 plus $100,000 for the allowances, so we can, you know, we're gonna be inside the walls in these buildings and that kind of thing, so we're just kind of putting some money on there. It's a not-to-exceed amount and we only use it when we need it, like all our other projects. Um, the impact, um, with this, the $628,000 would be paid through the, the deferred maintenance fund, Fund 14. And if approved, we will be starting right away, because it's a lot of work to do in a short summer.
Okay, are there any public comments?
No public comment.
All right, are there board comments?
I have a comment. Analog clocks, I feel that they are, they, I like them, even though these ones are not always aligned appropriately, but are, we're going away from these types of analog clocks to digital, to where you see a number.
A lot of times the elementary schools, you'll have the digital that these are, but then the teachers also have an analog clock that they can put on the wall, because we do need to teach kids how to tell time on.
Ah, that's why I was like, wait, we're there, there, feels that. Okay, all right, just checking.
I know. All my lesson plans run by a clock like that, it'd be very hard for me to like, move. Um, okay, no other questions? Then let's, uh, have a motion.
I'll move. Second.
Thank you. Uh, moved by clerk Castro, seconded by vice president Coffey. All right, vice president Coffey.
Aye.
Trustee Hunt.
Aye.
Clerk Castro.
Aye.
Trustee Wong.
Aye.
I two vote aye. Okay, that now takes us to the approval to purchase, this was originally item eight, approval to purchase the HPE Elite Notebooks for school-based, certificated staff as part of the district's five-year technology refresh cycle. Um, I feel like I would like to run too, we all need to move our legs.
You can all stand up. We're gonna finish strong. All right, we're gonna go quick, finish strong. Uh, yes, this is for the approval of the purchase of 125 laptops for teachers. Uh, back in 2020 during pandemic, we had to buy all the laptops all at once. This here is part of a cycle, so we're only, we're buying 125, so of a span of five years, it'll be a complete cycle. So last year is the first year, this is the second year, and then it'll continue on. So we seek the approval of purchasing 125 laptops.
Are there any public comments?
No public comments.
All right, are there any board comments?
No.
Okay, then do we have a motion?
I move. I'll second.
All right, moved by vice president Coffey, seconded by clerk Castro. Vice president Coffey.
Yes.
I two vote aye. Clerk Castro.
Aye.
Uh, trustee Wong, um, and the motion passes with us. Stay a little longer. Now you're gonna take us to the approval, uh, which was initially item number nine, approval to purchase the student Chromebooks as part of the district's five-year technology refresh cycle.
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Brian Briggs.
Yes, all right, my phone's off. Number nine. Uh, yes, this is the approval of the purchase of 1,400 student Chromebooks. Um, this also too is a refresh fight, uh, cycle. These follow the students' ninth grade and, uh, what do we say? I think we, uh, third grade. We really focus on the ninth grade just for the fact that when the students come in in ninth grade, it's, that's fresh, they get their books, they get their curriculum, and this Chromebook will follow them through their high school career. Once it's re, once they're done, it's gonna go back as a loner, uh, and to the other classes and whatnot, so, um, trying to think what else. Yes, we ask for approval. This, this is diff, this is tricky because, uh, I've been talking with CDW hourly, um, with tariffs and everything, this is, we're gonna slip right in underneath it. So they do have it in stock, uh, so we're hoping we're gonna get this done quickly. So yeah, uh, so we're seeking the approval of the purchase of 1,400 Chromebooks from CDW at $623,409 and 50 cents.
Okay, are there any public comments?
No public comments.
All right, are there any board comments? I just have, I have a brief, I know, I'm sorry, but I have a very brief one. Um, but just thinking about it, it's a significant investment and are you finding that our students are, um, taking care of their, um, Chromebooks? Do you think that there's any additional policies that maybe we need for that? Um, or is it going?
What I found this year, which has been more beneficial for us, is our K5s, K6s have been keeping them in the classroom.
Yeah.
Um, versus before it was take home and it, they put them in the backpacks, especially running out to the playground to play basketball, toss it and then, wham. So being able to take it and then again back and forth, leaving it at home and whatnot. So keeping them in the classroom in a cart, charging cart, has seemed to be better for our K5s and then the 68s, it's kind of one-on-one, and again, it's really up to the school if they want to have their middle schools take them home.
Okay.
Cause I don't want them to have to do it and, if they don't have to, so, but high school, yeah, follows them everywhere.
Do they in middle school have the capacity to have them, to keep them at school? Like if a school wanted to have them, would they have the capacity to charge them?
They have carts.
Oh, at, in the middle school?
Yeah, and again, we, we have, uh, if you come visit us, they're in our hallway.
Yeah.
Uh, just in case we have some to, uh, if schools want them.
Okay.
We still have them.
Okay, that's very helpful. I'm managing, you know, state testing when you have 800 and something kids and they all take them home, it's a hot mess trying to like figure that out, so I actually really appreciate that you have that option and there are carts available if they wanna have it or if kids, you know, have a hard time bringing it back and forth, so.
We also have these charging, like tubs that hold 10.
Uh huh.
Um, that was before I got here, there's like a whole room of them, so again, if they really just want 10 to see.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that. So I think you were gonna make a motion?
Yeah.
All right. Motion, motions by vice president Coffey, seconded by, um, trustee Hunt. Trustee Hunt.
Aye.
Vice president Coffey.
Aye.
I two vote aye. Trustee Wong.
Aye.
Clerk Castro.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And that takes us through, we've made it through action at 11:00 PM and now we're at board governance. Um, I'm just gonna ask, cause, uh, we've already done this for board governance and I think that this should go pretty quick. Um, so if anybody has any, unless somebody has significant things, our, our handbook committee had already looked it over, we were good with it, and then we addressed a whole lot of comments last time from the board, so is there anything that anybody has issues with?
I move.
All right, thank you. Uh, moved by trustee Wong, seconded by clerk Castro. Clerk Castro.
Aye.
Trustee Wong.
Aye.
I two vote aye. Vice president Coffey.
Aye.
Trustee Hunt.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Um, now we have the approval of the letter of support for Senate Bill SB22, that's the community colleges, uh, territory transfers between districts. Dr. Hildreth.
Thank you, President Kirby Gonzalez. This is a request to formally approve a letter of support that was attached to the agenda for Senate Bill 226, introduced by Senator Christopher Cabaldin. And this, uh, Senate bill seeks to streamline the process for transferring territory for community college districts, and, um, this bill is going to impact Yolo County and, um, allow all the districts in Yolo County to be in the same community college district, and, uh, we have a great relationship with, um, Los Rios, and this will not impact any changes for Washington Middle.
Okay, are there any public comments?
No public comments.
Are there any board comments? Any questions? Okay, then can we get a motion?
I move.
Um, thank you, moved by, um, trustee Hunt, seconded by vice president Coffey. Trustee Hunt.
Aye.
Vice president Coffey.
Aye.
I two vote aye. Um, trustee Wong.
Aye.
Clerk Castro. Okay, motion passes, great. Um, this is not gonna take a lot of time, I'm just gonna share it with you so you can understand my thinking and simmer on it, and I think even though we could move, um, so this is our board meeting efficiency and time management, I just wanna have a few minutes to talk about this during this, it'd be easy to put it off, but it's 11 o'clock at night, we're tired, and I want us to remember this feeling as we think about our board meetings so that we can end them earlier. And so what I'm giving you, um, is you see, I did not do it for all of them, cause I, it takes a lot of time to go through this, but what I did was I did the times, really the time breakdown for February 27th, so I kind of broke down like the different parts of our agenda and how long it took. Um, for March 13th, I just did one of the items in the discussion items and then I didn't keep going all the way through. So I just kind of gave a little sampling so we would have an idea and you can kind of look through, but I did do them consistently for our superintendent board comments, so you can look down at that and then see our specific comments, and, um, I did for some of the public comments. And all I want you to do is I want you for, I'm gonna time us, for 30 seconds to look at it, and then we're gonna do some takeaways, and I want you to share some takeaways, and then I have three questions I'm gonna ask, so the timer starts, 30 seconds to just look it over. You're just gonna laugh at myself. Quiet, leave your flash.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Oh, and trustee Wong, I shared this with you, um, in your, uh, Google Doc.
I had it, I'm looking at it.
Okay, that's been 30 seconds. You'll notice along the top, it tells us our total meeting time. And three of those time meetings, we had, three of the four, we've had to go back into closed session. Tonight, we have to go back into closed session again. So, anything, any noticing, so let's do, I'm gonna reset my clock and I'm gonna start just 60 seconds of. Any, anything that you noticed, any takeaways, anyone who wanna share, just whatever it can be, there's no wrong answer, what do you notice?
Talk a lot. I hope I'm more efficient today than I was these other days.
That we talk a lot, that the board, are you on specifically board comments?
The board talks a lot, yes.
Okay.
And our discussion items as well, so. On the one that broke out.
Yeah, but what I'm hopeful for, what I shared with Dr. Hildreth is now that we're getting into a little bit more season, for me, I can't speak for Jeanette, but that I don't have as many questions or need to go in depth as I was in the beginning or in the, you know, the beginning of the serving.
Any other takeaways you noticed? We did have a couple discussion items, you noticed, the demographer productions were very, very robust, he had a ton to present. And that took about 20 minutes though, he was able to get that presentation to 20. We had quite a few comments that made it 27. But then we had a couple other presentations that ran into about an hour. And I think that's a nice model, what the demographer did in terms of maybe staff presentations too, if we think being from 10 to 20 minutes, and then our comments too. I think will be one thing that will help us. And then I think our own comments. Help. Any other, we also talked about having our, which we'll work on, my computer kept timing out, I should have Brian Briggs do it while he was sitting here for five hours. But is to have three people come up at a time, and if we start to take that on, so it's not so hard to try to manage typing and all the things and have three people, when we have a really busy public comment coming up. I think that will help us to streamline that time. Okay, any last takeaways? We're coming in on two minutes, we're gonna.
I was thinking even with the public comments, just having them, even though we, it's 20 minutes, having like a line.
Yeah.
And so that way, it, okay, there's the next person, whoever the next person is, and so that way they're already ready to go.
At the standard.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so let's stop that clock, and then I have a couple questions I'm just gonna ask you briefly. So thinking over this time, we know this is only open session meeting time, because we're in closed session ahead of time for one hour. But what do we think is a reasonable open session time to end? Like, what would be our goal? Maybe we can't make it, but what would be our goal for the community being here and participating and for us and our staff?
Realistically, eight.
Being done at eight would be our goal.
I would, I mean, I'm thinking of parents who wanna get back to their kids.
An hour and a half.
Hey, I'm trying to be efficient.
Okay. Any others?
Well, if we were to do that, then we start open session, instead of going, starting a closed session, we start open session and then go to closed session.
I think that there are some times where we have items that are in closed session that we have to do. Sometimes discipline and other pieces, so there are, I think at times you're right, this evening, the items that we're going back for are not things that were contingent on us needing to do before, after the meeting, but there are.
And 5:30 is hard, I mean, it's hard for us to get here at 5:30, you know, so for community members who are working until 5:00 potentially, it might be harder for them to access coming in at 5:30 versus 6:30.
So maybe you're more like 8:30 or 9:00?
I was gonna, I was gonna say 9:00.
I was just being like.
I was gonna say 9:00 too.
I think eight is a nice goal.
Eight is a great goal.
Okay.
I like how you moved the items around, you know, you used your judgment on that, so.
Okay. All right, so, and then I have a couple other pieces. So a reasonable end time, anywhere between eight and nine is what we think is reasonable. I also wanted to share possibly the disclaimer, I'm gonna look at it and see, can I condense some of that so that can go a little bit more smoothly where we still say what we need, it can still be on there, it's still written there. So I'm gonna look at that. And then just on us that we do as much as we can to ask some of the questions ahead of time too. But I think if direction for staff is thinking about.
Jackie too.
Oh yeah, sorry Jackie.
Oh, sorry Jackie.
Trustee Wong, well, I can't see you, I'm sorry. Trustee Wong, what are your takeaways or thoughts?
I think actually our goal, both closed session and open session, really 10 o'clock, we should not try to go past 10.
Yeah.
Totally.
And just end a story, like I think that's full stop.
No, I agree too.
There's a reason, like, we are just doing, now we just know that, you know, it's gonna happen and it's a joke, but really we should end.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you. And I think at this point, it's, it's really not healthy, it's been, we're going now on four meetings that have gone really late, so. Versus a one-off. So, okay, I took notes on some of your ideas, I'm gonna think about it, you've all seen your board comments too, and so now we're gonna move into that and we can simmer on this.
Put this stopwatch on my board comment, and I will definitely.
I'm gonna leave it up, yeah.
We talked about that, actually be a lot more efficient, because it takes a lot of time to watch all these board meetings and time everybody. But I do think that that was one idea we can think about and for a suggestion is if we think about trying, I think we ask the public to be very concise in three minutes. We are sometimes reporting out on multiple committees we have, so if you have lots of committee reports, I think that's a little different. But I think we can try to, you know, to, to be, to think similarly, because our, for anybody watching, our comments have gone anywhere from 25 minutes to 42 minutes. And that gets pretty heavy, so I think.
That's why I said, I go, the last board meeting, I was pretty concise, I was like, you hit it, you hit it, you hit it, boom.
And the intent, I do wanna also acknowledge, the intent of board comments can be different than superintendent comments, so I also wanna make that distinction too. So, Dr. Hildreth, we're not necessarily saying the same timeline, but I think it's, it's nice to always be aware, it gives us a good pulse check, I didn't know until I looked at it, so it's just helpful sometimes.
One thing.
Okay.
Sorry.
Any last things before we move, yes?
Because I know I do talk a lot, after looking at my minutes. This is, I think we need to recognize, this is our opportunity for us to have these conversations, this is our only opportunity for us to be together as a group and have these discussions, so I just wanna acknowledge that as well. I agree, we do need, I myself need to be more concise.
Well, I do want, I do think that's an important comment, because we, this is not to limit anybody's First Amendment right, and this is, you have all been elected and you all have represent, represent areas and you all have important work too. So this isn't no way meant to silence people, it's just meant to help us just kind of have some takeaways and things, and there's no shame in this, in what your numbers are. It's just for us to have some, just for us to reflect upon, but absolutely, this is not a directive that you are, that anyone should feel worried to ask a question in a meeting or any of that. But when possible, if we can ask them ahead of time or know them, I think it's helpful. Okay, but you're all doing a rockin' job, and we're a new board, and it's important to.
I think we're just all jiving, and that's why we love to talk.
Okay, but we, we do need to all go home. So now we're gonna move that into, thank you for that comment, board and superintendent comments, Dr. Hildreth.
Thank you, President Kirby Gonzalez, I will keep it concise, just want to thank everyone for attending the town halls. It really is important to get the feedback, and so those who were able to attend, appreciate that, especially to our West SAC PD partners who attended all six town halls. So that was a huge commitment of police department time and resources, but it just shows that we really have a strong partnership with them, I appreciate. I also wanna thank West SAC PD Officer Schmidt was, visited our middle schoolers at Westville Village. And really, he happens to be a former SRO here in Washington Unified and did a presentation on the harmful habits like vaping and drug use. And so when we talk about reimagining or how, what our partnership looks like, this is what we're talking about, where we have our police officers in our schools building relationships and, and, and helping our, our students make good choices. Just wanna remind everyone, next week starts our spring break, which I know our teachers are very excited for. But however, just wanna highlight, Washington Middle College High School will remain in session during this time because it follows a different schedule. So we still will have students on campuses, on a campus next week. We are starting our CASP testing season, so a shout out to our high schoolers who have already started, our 11th grade students. And the rest of our students will start testing on April 28th. And we will be sending an email to parents with some tips on how to help your child prepare for testing, so please be on the lookout. And then lastly, I just want to share the changes in snacks for our schools during testing. So just want all of our community to know that due to updated regulations from the California Department of Education, our Food Services Department can no longer provide snacks at no charge outside of approved meal programs, including testing periods. So currently, the only programs eligible to receive free snacks are approved after-school programs are ELOP, Kid Zone, Club West, Champions and YMCA, which are supported through federal snack and supper programs. So we understand why there's this confusion, because snacks have been offered in the past, but because of this change in funding, if a site wishes to provide snacks, it can still order them from our food services, but it just, there is a cost to it. So I just wanted to make sure that we let the community know, we still understand the importance of feeding our kids and having snacks, but the reason of the change, I just wanted to highlight it. And that's it for me.
Okay. Thank you. Clerk Castro.
I'm gonna go ahead and waive my time, Madam President.
All right, Trustee Wong.
After looking at the chart, I'd like to wave, but I also just wanna big shout out to Chief Strange, West SAC PD, and the city for actually sponsoring Cornhole with a cop. I tried to play Cornhole and I think they kicked me off the team, no, really, I don't know how to play. And really just thank you for my board colleagues at the United Way Gala, we had a good time, it was really just powerful to see the impact that our partnerships have on the ground. So that's it, that's, that's it, hopefully that was under a minute.
All right. Thank you. Trustee Hunt.
The only thing I wanted to add is on the snack, testing snacks, is this something we can encourage sites to order regardless of? So sites themselves have to pay directly to the food services, okay? And so each site is gonna have the option to do it or not provide the snack, is that what I'm hearing?
Let me turn my mic on. So site administrators were informed that that is, that the purchase of snacks is now a school site cost, but if they need assistance, to let us know. So that's been the direction to school sites.
Okay.
And remember, none of our K8s have started testing yet. We had River City who started on Monday. And they did not have snacks. But they're not finished with testing, so we'll make sure that they're supported for the duration of their window.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Vice President Coffey.
So, yeah, I, I'm sorry, I just can't, so I, there was a public comment from Ms. Pinky in regards to the two years of the Hoot Mifflin and TKLI Amplify, these two programs for the kindergarten teachers. Would we be able to have them come to like the Curriculum Subcommittee to find out what's going, because I don't really understand what exactly happened for the pivot? Would that be possible?
Yes, would you, you're saying, make sure we invite them to Curriculum Council, yes, we're planning to, I think the meeting is at the end of April.
Yes, I believe like after.
And they will absolutely be invited so that you guys can ask them any questions and we can all answer.
Yeah, because I don't really know what happened, they said, because Matt Ainsworth, he started it, and then there was a pivot, and hearing her saying the curriculum, I just wanna make sure that we know what's going on there with the kindergarten program.
And just to give you a little bit more context, Vice President Coffey, we, we started out with a plan to do a two-year pilot, and we condensed it into one year. Just based on student needs in the area of literacy, but we can talk more about it at Curriculum Council.
Okay. And then, thank you, I appreciate that. The other thing was, one of the comments that President Nep made in regards to like grant money and, you know, the money for out-of-state travel. Would it be possible to find out i- if there's a description, because you know how there's the, I know you guys have told me about the designated and undes, restricted and unrestricted funding, where things could go if there's in certain buckets, can you tell me, or if there's a description for all of us of what actually can be spent from those specific buckets? If that makes sense, like if it's has to be spent on curriculum, or it has to be spent on specific areas, arts, or whatever it is? Yeah, is there, or professional development, is there, is there some kinda like a description of what is included in those types of buckets, or?
That you're interested in?
Well, the LCAP is one, because we have been spending a little bit more on, I don't wanna say a little bit more, but we've been, you know, putting that one towards our out-of-state travel, so I'm just trying to find out if we could get a better idea of that. Thank you, sorry, I'm trying to make it efficient. But yeah, okay, so there's that, and then, goodness gracious, all of a sudden, it's close to where my allergy medicine's not working anymore. So, yeah, other than that, went to Slide Park, got all the weather for Riverbank. It was fun, snow, rain, hail, sunny shine. And just wanted to also let you guys know that every year so far, last year, the Tim Brown Mentor Mini Camp was something that I did with Riverbank, and they asked me if I wanted to do it again this year with our district, and now we're sending more schools than just Riverbank. So Elcorn is one of them that has been also gonna be going, as well as Westfield and, so, I think Stonegate. I think, I think so, so we're, and I've still more to come, but that is all that I have.
Okay. I love that you saw snow in Slide Park. I just, I wanted to share that the Congressional Art Competition is open right now, and so I'll share this with, if we can get this shared out to our VAPA teachers. And they need to submit their artwork by May 2nd, but the reason it's so exciting, because if it's chosen by Congresswoman Matt Suie and it goes on, you know, to go into the competition, then it actually can be displayed at the United States Capitol in Washington DC, and so when you walk down below the Capitol, there's artwork from across the country. And so, wouldn't that be great if it's one of our kids? And all of my updates were woven out throughout our meeting today, so I do not have any others for us now. And we're gonna move on to future board agenda items, we have our Curriculum Council meeting, which is April 22nd. We have our next meeting, which is May 8th, we have our Governor's Budget Revision, which is May 2025. Approval of our 2526 budget, that will be this June. I would like to request, we've requested before, it can just be in a superintendent update or in a memo, is a wellness center update at some point? And then are there any others, it looks like Trustee Wong's iPad is about to go out again, are there any other things for future agenda items?
I'm, I'm not sure how to approach this, but we talked about the next steps for the school safety program. SRO, what to do with the funding.
Okay. So if we could have, maybe that can be in a superintendent update of what the next steps are in terms of what that is, especially after meeting with the city manager and others, so yeah. Okay, any others? All right, when, with that, we're, we have the honor and privilege of going back into closed session. Good night.